Tonight on, what is it, the 15th of October, we're going to be discussing the Multi-Gen Center and RFP of Forte de Littit. A little different setting like I just said, and we're going to be doing some deeper work, you'll see some stuff up around the room, we're going to have some things up here that will allow us to kind of be a little more interactive, also have some speaker cards out in the foyer if you needed a chance to speak, but we also have a lot to do tonight, and we have a lot of things, so if you can kind of add or leave your comments, that would be great. But with that, I'm just going to go ahead and start this, and we've got kind of what we're doing today tonight. A lot of people come and have some misperceptions as to what we're trying to accomplish tonight. The council back several months ago had decided basically what they wanted to see move forward with this Multi-Gen, but still with the project changed a little bit though. And with that scope, what happened was, is that we had a lot of new parts of the project come into being, and that was we wanted to do the entire park, not just part of it. And so with that came a different change in scope. So what we're here to do tonight is really kind of narrow down what council feels is representing all of you. Now, that's a tough thing, for matter who you are, okay? Because somebody over here is going to want this, and someone over there is going to want that. So our job was to kind of try and find a happy little ground. So I just wanted to let you know what our purpose is here tonight, and if you do want to speak, we'd appreciate it if you'd clear your comments accordingly. During the council meeting on September 18th, 2012, Mayor City Council voted to have further discussion on how to develop the RFP for the operation of the Multi-Gen Generational Aquatic Center. The purpose of this meeting will be to discuss the different options of having a third party or third parties operate at the center. Also being discussed will be the history of the project, what has been accomplished, the pros and cons of each option, and what is important that the city council will explore. This meeting will determine how staff will proceed with procuring the third parties to operate the center. You remember that conversation? So I'm just trying to let you know that this is the top of the conversation, and there's going to be a lot of detail, we're going to go into a lot of depth, so without too much further review, I just wanted to let you know that's kind of our focus and our scope the entire night, is to get on paper and down what we see as being the very best option for finding a way to move forward both the Multi-Gen Center and the Aquatic Center and the park as a whole. So with that, we're going to turn it over to our City Manager, Lynn Fisher. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and members of the public who are here tonight. We appreciate your involvement as part of the process and getting your feedback and input. We always like to see active citizens at our meetings, so we appreciate that. So tonight, we're here to talk about partnership options for our Multi-Generational Center, and I just want to start off by acknowledging the work that's gone into this process thus far. This is one of the most exciting projects in our city's history. It'll definitely be a gem here in our city, something that we will use to tout economic development, to attract residents, this is going to be just a phenomenal facility. And a lot of work has gone into it on the council level, and the subcommittees of council, on staff level, and with the PRLs, so we just want to give everybody really a nice appreciation and round of applause for doing such a great job getting us here to today, because it's taken a lot of work. So, good afternoon. Thank you so much. So the purpose of tonight's discussion, just for clarity, so we set the stage, because we could be here, I'm sure, till midnight or 1:00 a.m. talking about this center, because we're so excited about it. But to keep us on track, what we want to talk about tonight is the council's specific direction on what they want. This will allow for some in-depth discussion. Tonight's meeting is really for council to give staff direction on how we can go out and procure a party or parties to facilitate to operate this center that will then meet the council and the community's needs. There's some elements that we'll talk about, and if you look around the room, you'll see those. We're going to have a chance tonight to get a little interactive and talk about them a little bit more in depth, and also to provide council with some information. We've done some research at the staff level, and we want to share that with the council as well as to you, the public, and let you know what have we found? What are the lessons learned? What are the benefits received from other communities that we can then share here at Maricopa? We know we want to do something unique for our city, but at the same time, we can learn from other cities' experiences, so we'll share a little bit of that with you as well. So just so that we're all on the same page, we thought we'd start with the history of the process to date, and I'll kind of skip through it. If anybody wants me to take a step back and delve further, I'm happy to do so. Then we'll go into the overview of the different partnership structure options, so that we're all working on the same level of understanding on what kind of partnership operations and structure operations for a facility of this type would be. Then we'll get into some discussion, kind of put that right in the center of the presentation tonight. Council will talk, they'll have an opportunity for the public to speak, and by the way, there's speaker cards. So if you haven't had a chance, we would like you to fill out a speaker card, see Vanessa to get one if you need one. Then we'll get into the procurement process. Once we find out what is it that council wants us to put in the RFP, it will dictate what type of process we go about to procure. And so there'll be a slight educational process from our purchasing manager, Patty, and she'll explain what is the best recommendation for moving forward, and then we'll talk about some next steps and some anticipated timelines. So that just gives you an overview. History of the process to date. Back in May, on May 1st, council approved a philosophy for partnering with a third party, and then we put in Prence Ease for operation of the center. This was our, Jennifer Campbell's, our new Community Services Director, it just so happens that was her first meeting with the city, so she's had a chance to be with this project, fortunately, from the very beginning of this discussion. Then for the next roughly 27 days, we went to work, and we tried to find examples from other cities, we researched, we talked to our consultants who are experts in these areas, and we were trying to find what kind of components to put into that RFP. As part of that process and research, it became clear that we did not have just a template, kind of a model RFP that we would be able to utilize for the city of Maricopa. So as we delved into it a little further, working with our purchasing staff, decided that the first step would be what we call an RFI, which is a request for information. When you're dealing with a very complex subject matter, such as something like this, which is something the city would be dealing with for years to come, we want to do it right, and this RFI is the first step of the RFP process to help us gather information. I'll talk about that in a few minutes. So that was what we did during those first 30 days. We put the RFI, publicized it on May 30th, and just again, what an RFI is, it is a non-binding document, where we request from providers, tell us what it is that you would have answers to these questions. What is it that you could provide the city if you were to be providing this service to the city of Maricopa? It also allows us to see, you know, who's out there? Who's interested in providing this service to the city? And what are their skill sets, and what is it that they bring to the table? It's often used when you have complex matters to find examples of agreements when you don't have something off the shelf that you can just use, and it allows us to discover and incorporate what we learned from that into the actual RFP in order to make that RFP a stronger process and a better document for our city. So that is what an RFI is. So it opened on May 30th and closed on June 15th. We received three responses. One was a state-based nonprofit, and the other two were local Maricopa businesses. Wanted to point out to you that after it closed, we were approached by three additional organizations that offered partnership opportunities, but it was too late for them to participate in the RFI process. We were a little disappointed that we didn't get as many responses to the RFI as possible. Some qualified entities in the region chose not to reply, which is fine, that's just a personal preference of different agencies, but it was just, again, it's a way to gauge interest, and so this was our findings. While that RFP process was going on, we had a few things happen, a few exciting things. We had a change in council, we had new staff come on board, as we mentioned, and one of the new council, there's a, what we call a subcommittee, and you're familiar with this on a lot of different levels, but there's a subcommittee specifically associated for this project. It's called the Multi-Gen or VECO site oversight committee, and it's three council members, and the purpose of a subcommittee is, in a council meeting, we have time to get about this deep into discussions, wouldn't you say? I mean, we can't really go unless we want to spend hours and hours there. The oversight committee allows us to get very deep into things and provide that kind of feedback and get into different issues. And so this three-member council, they provide advice, it's an advisory board, and then we would eventually come back to council with anything they recommend, and we do this for a number of subjects. On this particular topic, as the change of council was going on, and questions were coming up, and the components of the park and the center were coming together, a lot of questions, great questions were being asked, and one of the things that came out of it was, you know, we're doing this in phases, and maybe that's not what our citizens want. Maybe they want us to just build this thing, build it all the way out, do full build-out. So they asked staff, well, what would that take? What would that take as far as cost to build? What would that take as far as cost to operate? Because there's two tracks on this, right? One is to build it, which is voter-approved, bond-backed by the voters back in 2008. The other is what are we going to operate it with, which is not paid by voter-approved taxes. That's paid by our general fund, and you all know, through sitting through the budget, see some familiar faces that have been through the budget process with us, you all know that our general fund budget is very tight. And so you had to look at those two different parallel issues, and they said, okay, so go back, staff, do some research, and come back and tell us what will it take to build, what will it take to operate? So we did that, and when we did that, they said, okay, well, there's some impacts to our budget. So now we'd like you to go over to this other subcommittee before taking it to the full council, and talk to them. They're called the Budget and Finance Operations Committee, also a three-member, three council member committee, and run it by them. They're the ones that are most familiar with the budget, and they're the ones that can advise us as a council, give their recommendation whether we should expend the extra funds on capital, and if we had the additional impact, whether we go third-party or city-operated, what that impact would be on the operation. Because keep in mind, the park would be city-operated, and this is about the whole project, the park and the Multi-Gen Center. So staff went through that process, BFO said, we like it. We have a way to fund it, to build the capital, and we have a way to pay for it, whether we go third-party on the Multi-Gen or not, the park is additional expenditure, and we have a way to do it. And so we went through that process, brought it back to council, which was done on September 4th. Next slide, Tom, please. And the council approved. They said, all right, the voters want it, the voters are going to get it. We're going to give them the full project, both Multi-Gen and park full build-out, very exciting for our city. Also, a lot of work, and a lot of expense. So they said, okay, what we're going to do is, we're going to build the pool all the way. Well, while that decision process was being considered by the full council, that changes the components of the RFP, because if we had gone out for an RFP with a smaller pool, and some of the components that were then later added, we would have had to stop that process and do it all over again. So that process was kind of, not almost stopped, but it was just kind of held off until we found out what the full council wanted to do on the build-out. So with the addition of the full pool build-out, and the additional services that that would require, and the additional field resources that will initiate interest, we decided to come back on the 18th of September to council and explain to them what was going to need to be done as far as the RFP process, and how do they want us to proceed? Because you can do it with one party, you can do it with multiple parties, where you parse it up a little bit. So when we went back on the 18th, council said, you know what, we think we need to delve into this a little bit deeper, and that's what brought us to this evening's presentation. Before we go too much further, I want to just talk a little bit about the two processes, because there are, and I think people tend to, in their mind, and it's even kind of confusing for us and the staff levels, that there are really two processes, and think of them as railroad tracks. You have the design and construction of the facility, and then you have the operation and maintenance of the facility. Right now, they're parallel, and they're running side by side. The design and construction of the facility is full barrel ahead. We are moving forward, and I'm going to talk to you about it in a moment where we're at with that project. The design and operation, I mean, excuse me, the operation and maintenance is what we're talking about here. At some point, those tracks intersect. According to our external consultants, as long as they intersect anywhere from nine to 12 months before opening, we're good. If you get too close than that, then you don't have enough input if you do go with a third party into your operation. So right now, we're about 16 months from this facility opening, so the process that we're talking about tonight is perfectly timed for us to stay on track and intersect at the correct time when we're ready to join the operation and the construction of this project. So just wanted to put that out there on the record. The other good news, architect that the city selected has experience, vast experience, working with third-party operators. So how they designed our facility is in line with best practice, and there's plenty of time for tenant improvements for the third-party operator, if that's council's desire to have some say into how the facility is done with a tenant improvement, you're probably familiar with that phrase. So we've got lots of time for that, just wanted to reassure everybody. Some exciting things to share with you is where we're at with the design process. First, the plans were submitted way back in July, and there were some corrections that needed to be done, and those were completed, and they were resubmitted here just a couple of weeks ago. So we're doing very well on that. The plant, the building permit will be pulled by the end of this month. So we expect to have a construction beginning November 12th, we will be having a community ceremony, so there will be a time to celebrate, and again, a lot of times, that sort of ceremonial, you won't necessarily see stuff coming out of the ground right then, but as well, we'll be doing some dirt moving and things, kind of like we did with City Hall. So please be on the lookout for that, and note that date in your calendar. And then, as I mentioned, construction is expected to be completed in 2014. That's when we open our doors and celebrate as a community this brand-new amenity that we have in our city. The Phase 2 of the Aquatic Center was submitted for permits, excuse me, back in, I mean, is expected to be submitted for permits in October of this month, and it has been integrated into the Phase 1 schedule. Again, we're doing this whole thing at once versus in phases, so they have been blended. So as we looked into what partnership structure options the city would have, we did this to provide an overview of the partnership options to be discussed. We wanted to give a summary of pros and cons, not from the city's perspective, but from those cities that we talked to. We actually spoke to a number of cities and said, what works, what doesn't, and we looked at all different models that different cities had, and I'll share that with you in a moment. And we're going to give you a quick summary of some of their advice. What kind of lessons did we learn, some things that they wanted us to think about, and then that will allow you to have a foundation for discussing all these components we're going to be talking about here in a little bit. We researched other cities, both in Arizona and outside, because this is a trend we're seeing nationwide, is third-party partnership, P3s, public-private partnerships, very common across the United States, especially in these tough economic times. City budgets have been hit hard everywhere in the United States, and this has been a way for a lot of cities to bridge that financial gap. So we looked at cities that have self-operated, cities that have partial contracts where they farm out, like for example, the Aquatic Center is one contract, the Fitness Center is another contract, and so on, and then some that have just full third-party. And then also, we drew upon our own experiences. Myself, this is my fourth city, and I've had experience with rec centers in all my other cities, and our new Parks and Recreation Community Services Director is also experienced and has a number of years of hands-on management of those facilities. So we draw upon our own experiences to validate what these other cities are telling us. So who do we talk to? What I want to point out on this, it's not really necessarily locations, but if you look on the far right here, you've got the city of Nixa, Missouri, which is 19,000, all the way up to Las Vegas, Nevada, which is 589,000. So we looked at cities of all sizes, and we also looked at cities that are brand-new, like us, and cities like Glendora, my former employer, that are 100 years old, 101, 102 years old now. So we looked at all different types of organizations to ask their opinions, because we wanted to kind of get a gamut. Some of these cities completely self-operate, some completely third-party operate, and some have recreations, multiple recreation centers where some are self-operated and some are not. Depends on when they came online, and their budget constraints at that time. So we did go out and give you, we just want to show you a little example of what kind of cities that we did talk to. And there are three basic models, not rocket science, you probably already all know this. One model is all city staff-operated, there's no contracts for anything. The second is the city staff operates using numerous third-party contracts, and then the third is a third-party operator similar to a landlord-tenant, where it's just turned over to a third-party. So I just want to quickly go over these different models, and I want to just, before we get into this, to say that council on May 1st already selected a philosophy to go with a third-party. So we share the Model 1, not as an option for this evening, because again, we're not here to choose models, we're here to talk about the components of an RFP, but wanted to share with you advantages and disadvantages, because those also play into what you want to think about as you're designing an RFP. You want to try to get these advantages into your RFP, and you want to avoid the disadvantages in your RFP, so it allows you to take advantage of some of that knowledge. If it's all city staff-operated, you have full control, clearly, because you're running it. That includes fees, programs, access to the facility, operation, maintenance, the whole thing. It allows you to incorporate existing city programs and providers, because as you know, we have a very robust Parks and Recreation program, and they do a great job without a facility, without a home yet, but they do a great job of working with the school district and other facilities to provide those services. The advantages, and these are what people have told us, is civic pride, that it meets expectations of the voters, because there's a lot of ability to be directly responsive to the voters without any kind of layers in between the city and the operator, and allows some flexibility. The fewer, the fewer parties involved, the more flexibility you have. That's just the nature of the process, and then in some cases, it is a revenue source for the city. The disadvantages is that it can be costly, because you have to have more staff. If you want staff to do everything, then that means more bodies, and staff have a cost not only for their salaries, but for their benefits, for their retirement systems, and so on. So you do have costs associated with staff workers' comp, you have a whole host of things that go into that, that if you have a third-party provider, you don't have to worry about. And it may not be self-sustaining and could require additional subsidy by the city. We did find that in all these models, some sort of city subsidy is pretty common across the United States. One thing I wanted to note also is that whether it's city staff-operated, or a partial third-party, or fully third-party, there's always fees for use. Think sometimes there's a misunderstanding that because it's paid for with taxpayer dollars that this facility is free to be used if it's city-run, and it's not free of a third-party. That's not the case. There would be fees associated with the usage of this facility regardless of who operates it. That's the only way to make these facilities pencil out. They simply are a drain on your revenue source. So no matter what, there would be fees associated for using it. The second model is where city staff operates using numerous third-party contracts for specific services. So for example, the city might have control over fees and programs, facility operation, maintenance, and so on by using those third-party contracts. It can be less costly, because you have lower staffing levels, because you're really contract management versus providing the services directly with employees. It allows you to provide a wide variety of programs, drawing upon the expertise of multiple providers, your ability to offset cost to the city by sharing costs and revenues. The disadvantages of this type of model is that you do have multiple contracts to manage, and so there is a little bit more hands-on responsibility, administrative responsibility for the city staff. Providers, if it does not pencil out for them, because sometimes when you parse it up as a whole, it might not be, it might be cost-effective, but individually, maybe a program's not very popular, and so the providers may say, you know what, we don't want to do this, it's not penciling out for us, you know, people have to be able to cover their own expenses, and so then we'd be stuck with a situation where we'd either have to decide if city wants to run it, or we don't provide it, and so on. And then you have the multiple procurement process, because some of the contracts might be for a year, let's say you're going to contract with someone to do your gymnastics program for a year, but your aquatics program for five years. So you're constantly in contract management mode, and you want to make sure nothing slips through the cracks. So that's one of the disadvantages that we were communicated by these other cities. If you go with an all third-party, this would be a single operator to do, run the whole facility, it does help offset the cost of running the center, you do bring experience in, because generally, people that are running the full center have experience doing that elsewhere, so you kind of get a ready-made model that has been time-tested in other cities. It provides a wide variety of programs, they often have different resources available to them, such as supplies and sponsorships. Some of the disadvantages that were communicated to us is that that does add a layer of bureaucracy or barrier to control for the council, and so we were told, if you want to make sure that you set your RFP and your contract up, if you want control over fees and programs, that you do that during the RFP process. Some of these cities wish they had, and they had not, and so that left them in a position after it was up and running with very little control over those things. Sometimes there's not pride of ownership, just think of it as your own home versus a rental home. Sometimes people tend to treat their own building a little better than, I'm not saying anyone would be, you know, disrespectful to the building, but that is just something, the pride of ownership is something to be concerned about, and also goes with the branding aspect, whether it's a city facility, or whether it's this third-party that owns it, and then pressure that leaves upon the community. Sometimes it can be considered not as connected or responsive, and then there is more turnover, because they have lower-paid and less qualified, in some cases, employees. Again, this is what was communicated to us based on these other cities' experiences. Well, one of the advantages is that they're lower-paid, right? Because as I just mentioned, staffing costs at the city is higher, so they can pay less, but sometimes that means more turnover, which results in service levels being lower than you might have if you had higher-qualified, higher-paid. And then city subsidy is often still required in addition to the fees for usage with these types of models. So how do we get from here to there, to decide how we want to structure this RFP to get you, the council, who represent you, the residents, the kind of facility operator that works best for Maricopa? So we really came up with one question, what does council want to control? And so we talked to the other cities, and we said, what was important, and what kind of control points did your city have? And we'll share a few of those with you, and when we get to the discussion, we can share more if you want to delve down into those based on Jennifer's conversations with the other cities, and that's where we'll kind of go around with the bulletin board, we have an interactive, with the flip charts, I'm sorry, and we have an interactive spreadsheet to capture it electronically as well. Here's some things that they said that you might want to consider having control over. Do you want fees and membership costs to be under city control or the third-party? Management fees, where the city would pay a management fee to the third-party operator, and that would be covering a lot of their expenses? Or can you get an administrative fee from? We saw some contracts where the third-party operator actually paid the city a check for the administrative fee, the right to use the facility. So we saw it written up both ways. Program definition, that's the programs provided. Utility costs, sometimes you don't think about that, but who pays the utilities? If third-party is renting, or is operating the facility, but they're not paying the power bill, where's the motivation to turn off the lights? For example. So you'd want to look at utility costs. Marketing branding, do you want a third-party's name on the building? This is really the only recreation center in our city? Do you want any other logoing on there? Those are things that you'd have to think about when you're making this decision. How do you want complaints handled? How do you want staffing complaints? People complaining about the programs, or people complaining about the people providing the programs? Right now, we have a very high expectation from our citizens for responsiveness. Make a phone call to a council member with a complaint, it comes right to me, it gets handled. Is that how you want that process to be with this contractor, or do you want it to go through their board and their management first, and then kind of bounce over to us? So something to consider. FF&amp;E's is furniture fixtures and equipment, do you want those paid for by the city or the operator? Maybe the city could get a better deal through co-op contracts? Maybe the operator has a contract that would get a better deal. Sometimes it's more cost-effective to have them pay for the FF&amp;E. You just give them an empty building and let them put their stuff in there. Do you, who do you want answering the front desk? Third-party staff member or city staff member? Again, remember, high turnover, do you want someone there that knows city operations? Because a lot of times, people are going to walk into this facility and ask general city questions. That's what we found through our contacts with other cities, where they expect them to have a general understanding of the city. Hours of operation, do you want control of that, or do you care? Liability, it's a big one, especially when you're talking about an aquatic center. Who pays for the liability of the facility? What if the city wants to use the facility for meetings such as this? Do we have first rights, or do we have to get in line between other programs that are revenue-generating? Do we want to compete with revenue-generating programs for meetings, town halls, and things? And then, do you want revenue-sharing? And again, we're going to get deeper into these in a moment. One thing that is, we're hoping, non-negotiable with council is that when we designed City Hall in this facility, we designed City Hall not to house the current staff, the parks and rec, and we, and those programs. We expected to house them at this center. So we need to make sure that there's space there, because there's no space at City Hall for them. So we need to be in a position where we're trying to squeeze them into City Hall, conference rooms, convert those to offices, or we'll have to find a site for them somewhere else. The next two bullets, the impact of voter-approved bonds and the term of the contract, have some concerns for our bond council. Staff, we spent a good hour or so with our bond council on the phone, and not to bore you all with that kind of legalese, let's just say that there is definitely, this contract will need to be structured in such a way that it meets both the intent of the voters and does not violate the fact that these were paid, this is being built with tax-free municipal bonds. So we need to make sure that we are abiding by that. We don't want to get in trouble with the IRS or anybody down the road. And so sometimes the term of the contract, depending on how you structure it, would have an impact to that. What kind of term of contract do you want? Five years with five-year, five-year renewals, one-year renewals? Those are things to think about. I have a funny little story on the repairs. Mine or major? Next story, or next slide, Tom, please, is, oops, one more. There we go, repairs, yes. Is that we asked one facility, we said, "Okay, well, who pays for the repairs and maintenance on things? And, you know, when is it, when is it there, on their dime, and when is it on the city's dime?" And he said, "Well, turn it upside-down in your mind. Take the facility and turn it upside-down. Anything that falls to the ground would be covered by the third-party operator, like fixtures, buildings, desks, things like that. If it stays, if it stays when it's upside-down, such as plumbing, electrical duct, you know, and heavy equipment, like the AC on the roof and things, those things that are permanently installed, then that would be the city's responsibility." It's kind of a nice visual way to think about how you would split those costs for repairs and maintenance, the pool pump, things like that. Procurement for subservices and goods, do you want to require the third-party to have a local preference? If so, what percentage of weight would go to that? Nonprofit versus for-profit, and there's some bond concerns with regards to that as well. Integration of current programs and services, this is probably the most sensitive bullet point of them all. As I mentioned earlier, we have staff that provides right now services and programs to our public. If we don't integrate those programs and services and personnel into this new facility, we're faced with a difficult decision as a city, where we either need to eliminate those programs and services, ergo, those employees, or we would need to find another facility to hold them in. So the integration of the current programs and services that the city has now is probably one of the most vital, important things to think about when we, when we go after this third-party process. And then fees for memberships and programs. So those are the things that we put up around the room, and we're going to have here in a moment, a interactive worksheet, so I can turn it over to council, take public comment, and start giving us some direction on each one of these things. But I wanted, before we go into that, to tell you what we hope the outcome will be of today's discussion, because this is kind of a big, big thing. We're going to talk about the purchasing code and process a little bit later. We thought, first, let's find out what you want, and then Patty will professionally explain to you what's the best way to go about procuring what it is that you want to provide. Then we will, at the end of doing all this, we're going to ask you, did we, council, did we capture what you want in the RFP? Is there anything missing? Is there anything that we didn't put up here? Did we get your feedback correctly? So once we verify that we have what it is that you want in the RFP, and Patty gives us that recommendation of how to go about making that happen, we would be seeking a council direction, a motion from council that would say, "We are asking staff to move forward with these particular components and issue an RFP." So that's the kind, just to kind of keep that in mind, that that's really our desired outcome of today's meeting. In a perfect world, that is what we would be looking to get from a motion from everybody. So before I turn it back over and to the public and everything, I'll just ask council, did you have any questions for me? Thank you very much. Tom, would you like to switch to interactive sheet? So I don't know how you want to do this, Mayor. We can do this as casual or as formal as you like, but we're here to help you capture your feedback.
Let's add here, let's, let's start going down these lists of things. Actually, what we're going to do here in this moment is we're actually going to turn some time over to the public, some speaker cards, and we're going to do some public comment here. Again, remember that the public comment, it used to be three minutes, or six parts, so we're going to use three minutes or less, and it looks like seven, eight parts. Make that three minutes. And it really needs to slip to the agenda. Again, remember, what we're trying to do here, like we just spoke about, is we're trying to figure out what's important in this RFP, okay? If it's, if it kind of appears off-topic too much, then I'm not going to limit it, nor I have to refocus. So with that, I'll start with the first ones. Lawrence.
Lawrence.
Yeah? How about? How about you? And while Lawrence is speaking, we have to, just as an FYI, the cookies of water every day is available to everybody. And I also wanted to take a moment and recognize Charlie Manuel of the audience tonight from the Oxygen Arena.
My name is Larry Fullerton. I'm the CEO of a small company here that we're planning on building a virtual incubator for small businesses. And one of the things I would like to offer to the city is training. The training would include citizens, anybody in the city of Maricopa could participate in the training. Computer skills is the focus. Small businesses, SMB, small, medium-sized businesses, we're interested in training them also. Possibly, the Chamber of Commerce would be involved in that also. And then startups, which is our major focus. Companies that have an idea, and they want to become successful in the marketplace, we can help them. We have a team of five professionals, over 140 years of experience. As far as training is concerned, we have an adjunct professor who's got a PhD. We have another gentleman who's been a University of Phoenix trainer for eight, nine years. I've been training for three years in University of Phoenix, so we have lots of experience in training. There is going to be an impact. If there is a fee involved in use of any facility, we're going to have to pass that on to people who are going to participate in the training. Some of the things that need to be put in place in the facilities would be, obviously, tables, projector, a screen, audio, outlets and floors. If we're going to have a facility for people who want to become computer-literate, we have to have places for them to plug their computers in. And typically, if you have a multi-use facility, you need to have plugs in the floor, so you can plug in your computer. And then, obviously, chairs. These would be not the kind of chairs that would have like a fold-down, but actual chairs that we put in front of tables, so you can work on table. So what we're interested in is supporting educational efforts for the public, but if it's going to be a fee involved, we're going to have to charge a fee for that. We're interested in citizens, small, medium-sized businesses, retail outfits, and startups. Are there any questions about what I have to offer here? Okay. Currently, I'm working with Patty and Danielle. I submitted a quote to you for the virtual incubator.
Thank you, Larry. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Next one up, we'd like to invite Stephanie Palmer. And then after Stephanie, you'll be Brian Mullins. Stephanie and Brian.
My name is Stephanie Palmer. And first, I'd kind of like to give you a philosophical look. I think, when I heard the possibility of a third-party that had a lot of expertise and offered diversity of programs, I think that's, that would be a win-win situation for the city. However, I feel very strongly, in looking at those models, that the city not turn over, control, oversight, or accountability, taxpayer dollars are paying for this facility, and to just become a landlord is not, I don't think, why anybody passed a bond. I went out and looked at the May 1 video from council, and I think that there's a model that perhaps was not presented tonight, and I listened, because I had listened to what Mr. Chamus from the YMCA had presented, and it was definitely not a landlord-tenant situation. It was very much a partnership with the city, where there was a local board that would govern the, the control of the facility, and so I did not see that presented tonight, and I think it should have been. Also, in that presentation from Mr. Chamus, I saw a number of council members change their minds from city-run to a third-party nonprofit run. And I think that you did that based on the presentation that was given, and so my suggestion would be to go back, look at that presentation, and include those kinds of things that he covered as requirements in your contract. I negotiated contracts when I worked, and if it's not in the contract, the vendor does not provide it, and you may think that, you know, you agreed on it in principle, but if it isn't in writing, it's not there. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephanie. Appreciate it. Brian, and then Marty.
Hello, my name is Brian Mullins, and I'm a resident of Maricopa as well as a business owner here. I've actually owned Anytime Fitness for, going on, seven years now. And what we opened it, it was, it was a long shot. The rents were pretty high, we knew they were pretty high, but we rented for the long haul. So when everything came about, opening up a multi-generational center, I'm all for it. I have two children, I want them to have a place to go to, I want them, the town definitely needs something for the youth, there's no doubt about it. I have some concerns. I have concerns about the YMCA. I've been a member of the YMCA before, and I have concerns about the way that they pay their people, and the way that they extrapolate money. I don't want to go out and just make assumptions here. I mean, I know the CEO in the Houston branch alone was paid $700,000, and he was named the second-highest-paid nonprofit CEO out there. And I'm curious about where this money comes from, and how do you get it from a small community like this? So I've, I've concerns about how it's going to be run, how it's going to be, how the, where the funds are going to come from to pay these salaries. Now, what you've said tonight, everything about bringing up these questions, that was great. Most of the questions that I've come up with were also up on those slides, and they're questions I want to get answers to. So I have more questions than answers right now, I really, I'm just curious about this. The town is supposed to be four small businesses, but I just, I just haven't been seeing that. I mean, everybody knows there's really high rents here. I've never had anybody from the council or the city come and talk to me about the rents. You know, I've paid over $1.3 million in rent in seven years. So my concern is, are they going to be, the YMCA, or whoever it is, if it's a third-party, are they going to be held to the same standards? I'm all worried about competition. The, the whole thing, Mountainside Fitness was supposed to come in across the street, and I was ready for that, you know? Competition's competition, it's part of life. But I feel like if, if the government is giving somebody a building, giving them the equipment inside, how is, how is that competition that's, here, sink, you know, sink or swim, your company made $4.3 billion last year, even though it's a nonprofit organization, you're not going to, you're not going to sink so fast. So I just have more questions than answers right now. So I'm really curious about if it's going to be a landlord situation, if, you know, how it's going to be paid. So those are some of, some of my concerns. Again, I am looking forward to a multi-generational center. I went to the one in Mesa, it was great. I shared my concerns with some of the city council. I just never thought that, I never thought the city would get involved with opening a private gym. I guess that was, that's my concern. So, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate it. Marty? And then Dominic is next. Dominic Rayland.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and the audience, I'm here to really say a couple of things about this project. First and foremost, you have tremendous leadership in Jennifer and Brenda. There's a lot of experience and a lot of wisdom and a lot of things, and information you saw on that slide is point-on, due for strong consideration. When this entire bond project started, the goal was to give PRL a home. And throughout this entire process, you have a lot of hard-working people, and I want to acknowledge Rocky, and Maria, and David. You have good people that are fully capable of running and staffing this facility from an oversight perspective. We built the department a long time ago with the idea of partnering with different community businesses. I believe Amy Bratley's here in the audience, great example of a partnership that led to the creation of a business. When you turn this thing over, lock, stock, smoking barrel, to a full third-party, you lose control. You lose value, you lose a sense of pride, you lose a lot. Now, we've also seen where information's presented that the costs associated with this facility are reduced, and it's off the city's back, but now it's on the back of X-party. At the end of the day, those costs reside on the back of every taxpayer. So while we're paying a property tax, now we have to look at a higher-than-normal membership structure, a per-class fee, there's a lot of costs that roll into there. If you look at the membership strategy of certain organizations and their fundraising requirements, they're going to now have to go out into a community that's already hit hard for donations and sponsorships, and add to that, so they can meet their goals. But at the end of the day, we're shifting costs from one place to another. The true cost is what the resident's going to pay. One thing that was missing from this presentation is Professor John Crompton's philosophy of the proximate principle. He's a professor at Texas A&amp;M. And my understanding from looking at a site plan, you're going to have some economic development opportunities abutting this facility. You have an opportunity to really recoup some revenue. I would defer to a conversation, and Danielle, if you asked me to remember every detail about it, five years ago, I couldn't. But it was an idea that you have the ability to use those businesses around there to help offset some of the operating costs through special districts. So, and I have about 30 seconds left, but the whole purpose of this is that we're opening a building, it's going to require X-hours to provide X-services and have X-number of workers. It doesn't matter if it's a third-party, it doesn't matter if it's the city that's going to pay for it. There are partnership opportunities, we have to really look at them, but at the conclusion of this, the city has to be the one driving the car. We can have all the passengers we want in the car, but the city has to be the driver on this process. Thank you.
Dominic, Rayland, and then Lee Felix.
I feel like I need a stool, this is not Dominic. Mr. Mayor, council, citizens, I appreciate the opportunity to stand before you. I too would like to express a little bit of concern. I've worked with the city for a long time in various different opportunities. I've worked with, with the Community Services Department, worked in economic development for a little while. And so I too understand kind of where we're going, and I appreciate it, and I'm so grateful. All the years ago, when I worked on the Parks and Rec Committee, we were talking about a dog park, we're talking about a skate park, and now we're talking about a whole multi-generational facility, and I think it's great, the progress we've made. My concern is that as we third-party this out, we're losing our connections with the community. We're losing the interest that we've built in terms of our interactions, and the scope that that takes to build and maintain that. And I'm concerned that we're going to lose our, I understand that the city needs to quote-unquote "grow up," but in the process of growing up, what are we leaving behind? What are we losing? We're losing our effective community relations. Community, again, I've said this before, community, our community can't be just about programs and policies, it has to be our one-on-one interactions with each other, and how we maintain and build upon each other. And I truly hope that we're not losing sight of this. While it may seem like this wonderful opportunity to have a third-party, I think what we're losing is the one-on-one interactions. I've, I've seen Maria and David do wonderful things without space, without a place, without opportunities of a field or of a basketball gym. Believe me, I've seen David work miracles in those cases. And so I don't want, I don't think we should lose those kind of connections. I don't think that, I honestly don't believe we want to put the city in that place, where we miss what we're trying to do, is build each other up, not take each other away. Thank you.
Lee? And then after Lee, will be Amy Breth.
Good evening. My name is Lee Filis. I'm the owner-operator of ATA Martial Arts and Karate for Kids. I am a partner with the Parks and Rec program, and I'm actually a little bit more concerned about competition. If there was a market for mountainside fitness, you would think that they would have put a mountainside fitness in here, that people want to make money just like anybody. So the problem that I have right now is that if the city decides to engage in providing services that are already provided by businesses in the community, then I'm competing against the city. That's not legitimate competition. For the most part, the city programs, which they already do now, people who are the underground providers, who are not paying license fees, or taxes, or anything like that, are using public space to provide services at a much lower cost than what I can do, because I have to pay rent.
Lee, can I interrupt a different?
Yeah.
I apologize, but you said you currently contract with the Services Department, is that correct?
I have a, I am in the Parks and, the Activity Guide. I offer services at my facility.
Well, just, just for clarification, point of clarification, I mean, as, as it stands moving forward, that's not something that would be in competition here, because it's currently, you currently do that already with the city, and the city would just simply expand that. So it would, it would be in competition.
It is competition if you provide martial arts services, for example, at the city facilities.
So I currently continue to contract with you, or something?
Yeah, but your contract with me is on a very minimum- Yeah, but your contract with me is on a very minimal level, it's a temporary program at a very, very much reduced cost, which is more like an advertising opportunity that the city is trying to educate the community on what services are available out there. So, thank you very much, I appreciate that. So it's a little bit, it's a little bit different situation, but for the city to collect license fees and taxes from me, and then compete against me, seems to me to be a little bit of a conflict of interest. So, you know, there's a lot of people out there, there's a, there's a, there's any-time fitness out there, there's a lot of spaces out there, gymnastics facilities, dance facilities, that already provide a lot of these services, and if you decide, which I don't know that you will, but if you decide to offer these services in the facility, then we have to, you know, adjust what we're doing accordingly. And it's going to put some unnecessary stress on our business, which I don't think is really necessary. And I know that there are public records available as far as what the Parks and Rec program is providing and what the enrollment is. I don't know if council or staff has really made an effort to go back and look at what is the interest level, and what classes are canceled because of low enrollment, what classes are doing really well, things like that. So, you know, again, in summary, it's just a matter of, if you're going to provide, compete against landlords for space, you're going to provide a lower-cost program, a lower-quality program than we can provide out in the community, I don't think that's really legitimate competition. So, that's my biggest concern. I support the city, I love the city, I've been, you know, I'm involved in the Parks and Rec program, I have an eight-month-old baby, I'm so excited to have him in this multi-generational facility, all the things that are going to be offered. So I'm not against it, I'm going to participate in it if I need to participate in it, but I just think that the city council needs to really consider when producing the RFP, what kind of services are they going to provide that are not already out there? There's plenty of us out there that, we welcome plenty of new members, okay? Thank you very much.
Amy Bratley.
Can I just put in something that I think was kind of misconstrued from before? Mayor, members of the council, I am Amy Bratley, but I think what he was saying is, you know, the YMCA can come in and say, hey, we're going to offer karate, gymnastics, figure skating, underwater basket weaving, whatever it may be. If we already offer it, that is competition. And yes, we do pay a high overhead in rent out here, higher than anywhere else in the state, but, you know, we do it because we love this town. And Brenda, you did a great job of the examples, I wanted to let you know that. But something else that you guys need to think about is, we do have a fabulous Parks and Rec staff, community coordinator, whatever you want to call it, that we pay really well in full-time. If a YMCA or a Boys and Girls Club or any other nonprofit comes in, they're going to have to pay a director out here as well. And our tax dollars are going to pay for one, they're going to fundraise for the other. Me, as a parent and as a homeowner in town, I'm going to pay for it with my taxes, and guess who's going to get hit up on the business end for a donation? Now, I may or may not be able to afford those fees to send my own children to this facility, depending on what the costs are, and I'll break down. But I know I'm paying for two salaries somehow. And I think we got to kind of look at what that balance is. I think there can be a balance, I'm not sure it's the best way to go. I think we have fabulous city staff that can do it, that have done a great job getting creative. We pay them well, they're dedicated to this community. And I know Brenda had said that, you know, then we have to bring on some more additional staff. I agree, we will. I'm not sure it has to be full-time, so that we wouldn't have to cover those benefits. I think we could do three-quarter time or half-time and still get a great quality program offered, under the guidance of the staff that has been with us since the beginning. So I just wanted you guys to keep that under consideration. Like I said, I'm here as a community member, not as a small business, but as a community member when I'm representing this. Thank you.
We have two others, I would like to invite Ron Shambless up, and then Court Rich.
Thank you, Mayor, council, staff, community, I'm Ron Shambless, I'm the Senior Operations Vice President for the Valley of the Sun YMCA. I did speak to council in the May meeting, and we really expanded on the whole community partnership model. Been communicating and participating for almost two years, participated in the entire full-day Saturday Planning Day for the Multi-Gen Center, and I think Stephanie got it right when we shared, we talked about a community partnership model, not a third-party operating model in terms of the YMCA, a very shared operating model. And when we sent our comprehensive RFI in to staff on the June 15 date, we outlined very clearly the community inclusiveness, the collaboration model, the inclusion of the small businesses that we heard tonight that would be included in that. We talked very expansively about the role of Parks and Recreation inclusive in there. We talked extensively about the community-responsive pricing. I am very familiar with these studies that we, that staff have done, and the studies that you have done in terms of the models here. And I can assure you that the YMCA responding to the city relative to the RFI, and hopefully for the RFP, would be only in a shared community partnership, very much a shared operating model, very much, very inclusive, very community-responsive. It would be locally governed, locally guided, locally employed, assets would be brought to the community, not assets extracted from the community. Tremendous third-party funding opportunities. And so, as we continue this dialogue, I commend the mayor and the council and the staff for the planning and the due diligence relative to the Multi-Gen Community Recreation Center. I would say in the last, we work extensively with your architect firm in multiple communities now. In August, the new ASU Student Recreation Center is going to open. It's a shared management, shared operating, shared staffing, significant economy of scale. And I could assure you, when we do the financial modeling, it would be a risk-neutral financial model for the city of Maricopa, in terms of the kind of financial modeling that with the Parks and Recreation and the city that we could provide. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak, and look forward to continued communications with the city. Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate it. And after Court, we'll move on to the other portion.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, members of the audience and city staff. Thank you very much for the opportunity to come here and have another conversation with you about the future of the Recreation Center, following Mr. Shambless. I don't really have much to add, but there are a couple of things that he touched on that I'd like to reiterate. One is the flexibility of the model that the YMCA brings in a situation like this, the ability to work with the city to make this really something the community can be proud of. They went so far as to tell me today that it doesn't even, the name of the building doesn't have to reflect that the YMCA has anything to do with it. It's the situation that their goal is just to touch as many people as they can with their services, to make the community a better place, and however that can best be done in working with the city is really what their interest is. So that touches on some of the concepts that you're going to talk about later today, about branding, and who gets to be kind of in charge of that coordination with the city. And certainly their interest is integrating the current programs and systems that the city has in place into this, and they have no interest in supplanting successful, whether it be small businesses or city-run programs. An important thing I know is, you know, every year, one of your biggest tasks is to set a budget for the city. And certainly the opportunity that a third-party operator or a community partner, in the case of the YMCA, provides you, is the ability to not have the Recreation Center be a drain on your general fund. And some of the proposals that you've seen, Brailsford and Dunleavy did a report for you all back in May, and they're very well-regarded, you know, they showed this likely, you know, something like a $300,000 a year drain on your general fund, or to operate the Recreation Center if you all did it yourself, using a typical model. And what you heard Mr. Shambless just say is that they can operate this in a way that's going to be revenue-neutral to the city. And I think that's important. I know back on September 4th, you saw a presentation that talked about the operating deficit to the city being somewhere in the $1.66 million range annually for the park plus the rec center. And I'm certain that, you know, defraying some of those costs, there are some better things that the city, or some other things that the city would deem important, that if you could spread that money around, that would be great. One thing I wanted to touch on that Mr. Shambless mentioned, how the YMCA brings resources into the city. They view themselves as being able to add to the city, instead of taking away from the city. There's been discussion and suggestions today that, you know, they would go out and fundraise in the, in the community, and that somehow that would pull resources out of Maricopa. Well, what they do is they bring you the ability to fundraise in Scottsdale, and Phoenix, and Glendale, and all around the valley, and all around the state, and bring those resources into Maricopa. So they're not interested in taking the resources out, they're going to be able to give you a larger pool from which you can draw the resources. So I echo what everyone here has said, that you don't want to just turn this over to a third-party and give them the keys and say, go do it. I think that would be a bad idea. I like the discussion that's been had already, and it's been had over the last few months. I encourage you to go down that partnership route. And again, thanks to your staff, I know they've put in a ton of hard work on getting you to this point, and tonight's going to be a great experience. So, thank you.
Court, appreciate it. With that, let's move into the nitty-gritty of it all.
Go ahead and bring up the direct spreadsheet, and so, we'll kind of turn this over to you, Mayor, to run it, you know, we just put them up, we didn't know if you wanted to, is interacting going around the room and taking down some notes, or how you want to do this, we'll work with you.
Okay. Well, certainly we can do that, I mean, let's just start, where's your fees and membership? Back over there?
Fees and membership.
All right, I'll do it. Let's go ahead. Okay, well, let's get in on this, we've got lots to get to tonight, so we're going to start here, with the fees, I know the ship costs. So let's start with fees and membership costs, and basically move into the councils to kind of what you're looking at. I don't know if we want to just go down the line here, Jennifer, you want to pipe in with a few things, or? Council, how do you want to do this?
Jennifer, I just thought you'd like to offer a little bit of a course.
So, we'll start with you, Jennifer, if you have any.
Some examples of what other cities have done. Oh, okay. You will need some of this. That would be helpful.
And then council can chime in with what they like, and we can keep moving, we have a lot, a lot to do.
And we're going to start, take time real quick on this. Back in, and you can save it for Jennifer, it's going to be real quick, back in May, we had a consultant that did a breakdown for us on possible membership fees, and what it would cost if a third-party ran it, what it would cost while city staff ran it. Do we happen to just have that slide available, to just show it? Because, I mean, we spent, what, 30 grand on that study? I mean, that was, that was some well-money spend, where we broke it all down, and let's just go back to that slide and figure out what's best for fees when it comes to, according to that study, what's the best option to go with fees? Would it be different though, or?
What we're talking about on the fees and membership is who controls that? Who sets it? When I'm going to talk about what those fees are, we're saying, does council want the city to have the final say in fees and membership costs? Or do they want the third-party to be able to control and have a final say in fees? Those are the kind of two questions we're asking on each one of these. Not asking what the fees are, because we did have a couple of models to go, where Dunleavy about like 75 percent reduced, I'm looking at verification, 80 percent, 90 percent, 100 percent subsidy, so on and so forth. We're saying, who does council want to have the final say in memberships and fees? And Jennifer has examples of how other cities get structured in, where the council still has some say, that's what you choose.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
Good evening. Mayor and council, citizens, thank you very much for letting me speak tonight. We went ahead and called to some of the other communities that were listed on there as well. Some of them had different ways that they did it. With some of them that did third-party operators, they completely let the third-party operator charge what they needed to. With some of the facilities, obviously, there was a certain break-even point that they had to do, depending on the subsidy of that community center, it did drive a lot of the different costs. Some of the other cities that I did contact actually had it where the third-party operator would determine fees, but had to get approval from city staff and city council, and other ones kind of worked on fees. Part of it has to do, again, with demographics of the city that you live in. All the different cities that we contacted have different income levels, different demographics, things like that. So when we're asking about fees and programs, I guess we're looking at, do you want just, is it just up to the third-party and they can charge pretty much whatever they want? Do you want city control over it? How do you want to go ahead and address increases? Because obviously, as the center is open year after year after year, you can start incurring different costs. As a facility gets older, it will require more repair and maintenance as well. So that sometimes has to drive up the cost for membership. Look at what the economy does. Right now, you know, the economy's kind of on a little bit of an upswing. If for some reason the economy were to have another dip, what would that do? Do we have the ability to lower the fees for the community? Do you have scholarship aspects that you want to add? So what happens to people that cannot afford to go ahead and go to that center? So basically, on the fees and membership, it depends, do you just want, again, third-party to set those fees, or do you want the city to have, again, some control over it? And where it's maybe a joint, where it has to be brought to the board or to the council, city staff, to make sure that the fees are appropriate for the community in which we have here in Maricopa?
Council, how is the fee structure in Mesa?
That was not one of the cities that we looked at.
Did you look at Chandler or Prius?
No, we went ahead, we looked, some of the cities that we went ahead and looked at that had centers were like Glendora, we had centers in North Las Vegas, there were centers in Las Vegas, things like that. Within Mesa, those are all city-run, so the city sets those facility rates. They don't have third-parties, so Mesa runs their own centers.
Vice Mayor Farrell, and then we're to Councilman Kimball.
Well, why don't you share with us, fee structures, of the cities that you did research on, the new partnerships with third-parters?
Okay. And I've got all of their contracts right here.
And who has control of what on that?
Sure. And to first start off with some of the cities, Tempe was city-owned but had multiple partners. North Las Vegas was a YMCA-operated facility. So with the YMCA operated in North Las Vegas, the YMCA did go ahead and establish those fees. The cities did not have a say in the fee structure that the YMCA set. They went ahead, that was not part of the agreement, so the city was able to go ahead and, or the city did not have a say in those fees, so the YMCA was able to set those fees. Within Morgan Hill, that was, it was a facility that was owned by the city and jointly operated by the city and the YMCA, so the fees were jointly determined by the city and the YMCA. That was actually a really great model that I found. Actually, part of the center was done by the city of Morgan Hill, and they ran certain programs within that facility, and then the YMCA ran certain aspects and programs in the facility. They also shared like joint responsibility for hiring, job descriptions, discipline. So that was one that was very joint as well. The city of Las Vegas actually has some of their own centers, most of them were city-operated, but two were YMCA. And with those agreements, the city did have kind of like final say and approval on programs offered, and the fees that were paid, or the fees that were to be paid by the citizens.
Councilman Kimball?
That answered my question.
Perfect. Okay. Well, I think, I think that there's a, there's a bit of a broad overview here too. I mean, obviously, we're trying to get in the weeds, but we're not trying to go all the way to the dirt here. We're just trying to, trying to see what's, what's kind of going on. And as I, because I see this with a broad brush, to some extent, I mean, we are indeed just trying to put forth enough detail in a proposal, correct me if I'm wrong, Patty, but enough detail in a proposal so that we are happy with the direction in which it's going, but that there is always room for negotiation between staff and, you know, winning bidder, so to speak, later on. So again, broad brush here, and I'll tell you, from what I've heard just now on the fees, I really like this joint model. And the reason is, is I think it brings both parties to the table. I think it garners a relationship of cooperation, and yet it still provides the city an oversight ability that I think the voters and the taxpayers would want us to have. So obviously, it'll be a future council somewhere down the road, but I think that's, that's my personal, what I see at this moment. So, questions, concerns? Yes, Councilman Kimball?
I 100% agree with the joint model.
Okay? Yeah? Yes, okay. We have consensus on that. A joint model with, again, some flexibility for negotiations, but, you know, on the specifics, but at least it's moving in that right direction. Okay. On to the next one. So management, admin fees, so it's a little slight variation on this first one, on the fees and membership costs.
And on that one, number one, there can either be a maintenance fee that is actually paid to the paid to the third-party or partner. A lot of the cities that actually we researched actually had admin fees that were paid back to the city. And in most cases, that was actually the case. With the centers in North Las Vegas and Las Vegas, they actually paid, North Las Vegas received $1,500 a month from the YMCA for admin fees. Because again, there was some oversight that still had to be done at that center since it's still a city-owned facility. So they paid that. Las Vegas just $1,300 a month to actually the city from the third-party, because again, there's still some oversight. Because with both of those facilities, and we'll get to that when we get to the slide, but with most of the partnerships that we've found, most of the time, the city, there's a lot of maintenance and often the city had paid utilities. So there still has to be staffing levels within the city to make sure that you're overseeing things. So with that, we didn't go ahead and find any that necessarily paid an operating fee, but we did actually find some that did admin fees to the third-party.
Okay. I actually would like to ask a question, Ben, of Ron in this particular case. If you'd step up for just two minutes, just kind of a brief summary here. Give me some of, and again, this is specifically just in your experience, not specifically to you, but just in your experience, what do you usually find in that, according to that statement?
All three models, but one, we love the shared joint model. You cannot successfully operate a community partnership model without local decision-making, community responsiveness, and good fiscal stewardship at the same time. But as I tried to share in the limited four or five minutes, is that as you look across there, whether it be shared programming, shared pricing, inclusion, some of the small businesses, those are usually contracted services out just like that.
So let me specifically ask you then, I mean, as we hear some, I mean, if I sit here and say someone's going to pay me to use this operation, I'm all on board with that. But I know that when you do that, you get something up. So I guess my question to you is, is if we were to kind of go along those lines, I mean, maintenance and utilities, that's a big issue. And I know that that's how they were giving that up. They were making that trade-off. They were getting paid $1,500 a month, but then the city was covering maintenance utilities. We all know our utilities are very high here. So, you know, again, just food for thought, counsel.
If I might add, next week, we break ground on the Elmer Oss Multi-Generational Center and Architecton did the project. We have been selected through RFP process, just like this, the provider. We are responsible for the utilities, maintenance in that operation. And we primarily have all the financial risk in that operation. And there is somewhat of a revenue sharing model. And there is no protection on branding the name and the like. So I was very, very sincere when I talked about, it's not a third-party operator that we subscribe to for the city and have it since the beginning. It's a community partnership model, making the center a focal point where good core competencies come together and shared delivery systems and everybody wins.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, thoughts? Thoughts on that? Which way are you leaning?
Towards a maintenance fee, with admin fees, towards a revenue that's coming in, towards a sharing of those fees? Yes.
What is the management fee?
Management fee and admin fee.
And utilities, is that what that?
Utility costs is actually number four, but in Jennifer's description, she had mentioned it as $1,500 and $1,300 in that specific city, but that maintenance utilities were included as part of the city's.
They're a hard copy of that somewhere around now.
The bullet points are highlighted in the presentation, the however many items, 21 or so, that Brenda went through. And so all 21 are in the presentation.
Hard copy of the presentation. Okay. While you're finding that, we'll go back to counsel.
Some of the concerns that were brought up by some of the citizens was the fact that the rent is high here and they are, they don't want to have to compete. And we understand that. A management fee, I'm not certain as far as procurement is concerned, but how would that be handled? And is this something that we could predetermine within the RFP before it even goes out?
We would have to state in the RFP that it would be either a management fee or an admin fee or a combination of the two. And during the contract negotiations, that said fee will be defined. We would have to determine beforehand when we sit down and talk about how we are going to negotiate the contract of what that fee will be.
Just checking out. Okay. So yes, Counselor.
So if we check the city box, right, on this, that would mean that the city is charging a management fee? If we check the third-party box, that means that what? We just don't charge them anything?
No.
That's the determination here, right? That's what we're determining?
I'll defer to that.
Excellent point. Kind of throw it up there as, it's really kind of two items, an A and B. Are you willing to pay a management fee and/or do you want to receive an administrative fee? What would be your preference between the two?
Okay. I'm going with receiving admin.
It doesn't seem that to be a leading question, whoever the lawyers are in the room that would suggest.
But yeah, other cities experience by receiving a fee. What do they give up and exchange?
And that again, depends completely on the arrangement. The two cities that received an admin fee did pick up, one of them did pick up utilities and maintenance, the other picked up maintenance. The city of Delaware, Ohio, actually is paying the YMCA a fee of $185,000 in 2012 and a fee of $187,000 in 2013. So that's one of the agreements that just happened in Delaware, Ohio, where they're actually paying a management fee. In North Las Vegas and Las Vegas, they are picking up utilities and maintenance and they're receiving admin.
Okay. Correct?
It'd be great to know tonight before writing the RFP, is counsel interested in paying a management fee at all? Because if the answer is no, we're not interested in paying a management fee to somebody to operate the facility. We can easily include that in the RFP. If you want to give us the ability to negotiate an admin fee or a management fee, that would be great to know as well.
Well, and again, I hate to be so middle-throat on everything, but on these issues that are, you know, as tough as they are, I understand that the negotiations, where staff is going to get further in the weeds on this coming back, because remember, this is for the RFP. This is what we're asking for people to submit to us. And it's not to any one particular company, it's to anybody out there that wants to play in this game. So if it's Boy Scouts or YMCA or Boys and Girls Club or whoever it is that answers back. But I think I would have obviously a preference in receiving the revenue first and foremost, yet understanding that a large, you know, chunk, when you play the numbers, could come out that we could lose something on the other side. So I think that, you know, according to what Brenda just said, I would do a preference model. At preference, I'd like to receive revenue. Yet if it turns out that it ends up being, or costs us more in the end, then maybe we need to give staff the ability to have a little bit of negotiation leeway so that we can play those numbers out as we actually get to it. Thoughts?
I'd support the flexibility standards.
But still give them a preference, obviously, first, so that we can issue that.
I'm good with that.
Counselor?
Yeah, we're good with that then. So obviously, we want to receive revenue first, that's the priority, but we want to give the flexibility in negotiations, depending on how the numbers play out. Obviously, what the city wants to come out ahead.
Okay. Okay, before we move on to the next one then, the program definition, we actually have a entry here that I needed to get to that I overlooked, and I apologize. I'd like to have Chairman Manuel come up from Yauk Chin. Come on up and speak to us, please.
Thank you. My name is Bruce Manuel, Chairman of Yauk Chin and Community. There's no overlooking, and I put it in late after talking to you. Having some brief discussion on our interests, we talked about it this morning as counsel, and trying to define how much of a control factor that the residents of the Maricopa city would like to have on something like this. We know funding is a big issue and our communities are so intertwined that the relationship needs to be a little bit more stronger. The Yauk Chin and Community has also included in our discussions the possibility of being included or at least thought about and considered for possible funding or investing into your project. No oversight on control or anything like that. We definitely, as talking to the opportunities or at least the experience on the city and staff being able to manage those facilities, ours is just basically getting it done without having the outside entities come in and determine what's best for the city. I think that can be done within the people in the city of Maricopa, just as we see it in Yauk Chin. We need to develop and grow this community our own, and I think we have the strength and the people to do that. So in moving forward and putting your discussions and after this, I'm, as I usually do, disappear. That's all we wanted to put forward, is that the possibility for more dialogue and considering our thoughts on both parties and really moving this forward. So I leave that to you guys tonight. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, one thing that I want to bring in mind as we go through each one of these is this is going to be the backbone for structuring of the scope of services, whether we do an RFP or an RSOP or any other solicitation format. So we have to be as clear as possible on here. Like for the fees, you wanted a joint effort. So we need to define it in the scope of work for the RFP. Okay, we will have a joint effort, but who's going to have the final say? Do you want the council to have the final say? Or are you going to want the third-party to have the final say? For the management fee and the administration fee, if we're going to go with the third-party, that factor will be into the scope of work. It won't be if we do a combination of the city-run, I think it was the second model that you had up there on the slides. So as you go through each one of these, keep in mind that it's the backbone, that I'm going to use this information that you provide us to draft the scope of work. So it's got to be as detailed as possible of what is your expectations? So like we can document your expectations and put that into the scope of work.
Okay, well, let's go back to one then quickly. I think the city, the city did the final say there. Is that correct? Okay. Number two, Counselor, did you have?
I just had with number one. Can we structure, we already have a structured fee schedule for football, for everything that we offer, all the services that we offer. Can we include that in the RFP as an example of where we want to stay? I'm going to give you a perfect example. About six years ago, I signed my son up for flag football. We paid $25. I just signed my other son for flag football and I just paid $50. So within the last seven years, you went up $25. But is there like a fee schedule that we could include? You said you want the backbone. Is there something that we could include within that RFP to give them an idea of where we want to go as far as fees, our solicitor?
Mr. Mayor, Counselwoman Dussie, the fee structure is something that I think will have to be defined by Jennifer and group and the subcommittee from Parks and Rec. We can put it in there, but then we're also limiting ourselves when we get responses back. Because all we want them to know is what is our expectations of the third-party contractor and what can they expect from the city? Our expectations are that the fees will be a joint effort, but final say by the city council.
Mayor?
Yes.
Counselwoman Dussie, one of the things that we will be doing in its upcoming is our finance director, Tom Dunsing, will be working on a complete fee study. One of the things that we want to bring to you as a community services department is a complete fee structure of everything, from facility rentals to programs. And what generally cities do is you basically take the fees and you basically develop kind of a range. Because what will happen is as programs grow, things get bigger, depending on the cost, let's say for some reason, you know, cotton all of a sudden became very expensive and uniforms went up by $10. It gives the department or again, that entity, the ability to rise and lower different fees. So what we'd like to do is we will eventually bring to you a complete fee structure for the entire department that will have a fee range for all of the various activities as well as facility rentals that we'll be doing. So that's something that's coming up soon in the future.
But the third-party doesn't have to oblige by what we set.
Unless, what you've marked down, depending on what the fees, if the city has final say over the fees, you would.
I just checked the city on the screen.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I believe what would happen is they would have to structure the fees so that they get a certain amount of money recruited. I mean, obviously, to make it physically feasible for them, they would have to say, this is our fee structure and what we need. And then it would be brought forward to the council for you to have a final say or to maybe then question, why is this so much higher than that and so on? So that's what I believe I hear you saying on that.
Okay, so management fee, admin fee, we hit that one again. Do we hit, clarify that one specifically enough, or eh? Okay. And then on to program definitions.
Okay, the next one up is program definition. This is basically determining, what are you going to offer in the center? Obviously, we know the multi-gen center has a gymnasium, it's got dance classrooms, it's got wet and dry classrooms, it obviously has an aquatic center. So with some of the facilities that we looked at, some facilities did not have any say over programming. Some of the facilities, again, had final approval on programming. Also, many of them kind of did some joint programming. One of the ones in Las Vegas, one of the centers was 85% run by the Y, 15% run by the city. Obviously, most of them definitely talked about being able to utilize the different areas within the center. But basically, developing program definition, this is basically kind of a menu of what you're going to offer. So what type of classes would you offer? Making sure that you have classes for seniors and for adults and youth and toddlers and adaptive and diversity and things like that. So on the program definition, it's basically figuring out, do you want another party to determine what the program's offered or would you like the city to have a say in what programs are offered as well?
Counselor Burke? I would definitely recommend that that would be a joint sponsorship with the city making a better decision on programs. I agree.
Counselor? Yeah, I agree. I think that's the best way to go.
So we have to make a determination right now whether it's 85, 25 or whatever.
Mayor, councilman, that was just like an example, and one of the facilities that happened to be that.
Perfect. But yeah, I think we definitely want to give deference there so that the city can launch out for small businesses and like we heard from some of the folks earlier today, that we're able to kind of make sure that there's not, I mean, competition will always exist, but we certainly want to be aware of what was said as far as, you know, subsidies and things like that. We really don't want to be against them, we want to open the void up. So perfect. All right.
Question. How do we impact the program definitions? What point do we do that? Do we have a mind, business, training? And that would have the exact.
Right. And that, I think, in my personal opinion, that's going to come further down the road as we get past this point. Because right now, again, we're just trying to make sure that we get a solicitor to come in and a vendor that wants to do that. And that will be further in the negotiation. So that would be community services from the city standpoint, and you as a small business owner to come together and work out that so that as you work together with the vendor.
Well, we can notify so we can have a look at that. I'm sure that mine will want to have a say so.
Absolutely.
We need to have some kind of flag that goes up and says, okay, now's the time to start talking.
That's something we can do as we get to that point, absolutely. So we can give a name to follow up to Vanessa and we can make sure that happens. And I thought your thinking was correct, so. Perfect.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, maybe to provide, Mr. Fulton, to maybe provide a little bit more. We're looking at right now the broad strokes of who has control and final say. When we get to the actual point, so that will develop the RFP, then we'll issue the RFP, then they would award a contract based on it, then they would have to come back to council with their program to get the council approval. So that is something that wouldn't happen for probably another year. So we have lots of time to get into that.
Perfect.
In all of these centers. The details of all of these would be at the implementation process.
Absolutely. Okay, on to utility costs. Over there. Thank you for having me on. Utility costs here. Vice Mayor?
I'm going to definitely recommend third-party.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, what we did find is through several agreements, absolutely, some of them had utility costs completely paid for by the third-party. A lot of those were either shared utilities or some were completely picked up by the city. So that is completely.
Yeah, I'm all in favor of that. Anyone else? Problems, issues with that? Or target with that? Well, good to go. On to the next one. Marketing branding.
Marketing branding.
Marketing branding, um, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, this is something that's a little more difficult to get into. As far as what we found is, depending on how you would like to market this, on some of them, when you actually went to search for different centers, you would go to a city website, and it would actually come up on the city's page, and you could find the center, you could export, things like that. Others actually directed you to a third-party site. So, it's going to depend on where you want people to be able to find that information. Also, how do you want the building branded? Some of them absolutely had a third-party name on the building, others did not. Others had an actual name, like Skyview Recreational Center, and had that, and it had a big city logo. So, even though, even though it was operated by a third-party, it still had the name of the center, and it had the city logo. So, that would be completely dependent on what you would like to see. So, where do you want people to see the information? Do you want them redirected to a different website besides the one that the city has? And again, what would you like on the building? And again, that would be for flyers. Also, some of the cities did have, one of them, and it was Morgan Hill, and they talked about the fact that they had some very distinct branding, but then they had some joint. One of the ways they did some of the joint was maybe with some of the statues to identify different people, and some of the branding within the building. So, you can have a little bit of joint, depending on what it is, but there were certain branding for the third party, and then specific branding just for the city.
Councilwoman Burke?
Given that it's, it's taxpayer dollars, on money and such, so I would, I would imagine that, I would be in support of naming it a City of Maricopa name, like, whatever, Skyview would be, City of Maricopa, Skyview, or City of Maricopa, something. And the third party would get to operate it, and they would obviously generate a nonprofit revenue for their nonprofit at the same time, but it would still, I would support having a City of Maricopa name, and having advertising, or, or information about the facility on the City of Maricopa website.
Now, now, let's, let's go to the side. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I don't have another side. My suggestion would be that this would probably be go on to stuff programs is, and have it jointly discussed, but letting the city have the final say on everything, as far as marketing and branding.
I gotta say that, you know, playing the other side is, is one of those things that's really important. I agree that, that I think the city should have the final say, and that, but I, but I also think that, you know, if, if, we can keep, we have to be very careful here, because we can keep saying that we want the city, 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 the whole way down, and then what do we have? You know, we, we really don't have an agreement, we have, the city's doing it all, and then we're, we're not getting where we're trying to get. So, so we do have to be careful there. So, so again, broad brush, I, I actually lean a little bit more towards the joint side. And, and the reason is, I like the idea that, that the city has its name on the front, that's integrated into the website, those types of things, and that it is, is, because we want to use it as an economic development tool, I mean, that's what Peoria uses it for, right? So, we want, we want to showcase it, we want it to be honest. But at the same time, I would have to imagine that if I was a third-party vendor coming in, that
I'd go, or something.
I want something in there too. So, so whether it's, you know, some sort of a, a display inside, or shirts, or, or some mention of this is who helps run it, or, you know, something that can change, right? I mean, you don't want, you want it splashed across the front of the building, and then if another vendor comes in three years later, that, you know, it costs half a million dollars to fix that issue, you know, to, to put somebody else on there. So, I think there has to be some negotiation, and, and I would lean a little bit more towards the joint side. But again, if it's a, if it's a 60-40, or a 70-30, that it's 70% Maricopa, and then, you know, offering up some, some, some fate, so to speak, or some, you know, terms of, of, you know, drawing them in, because we don't want to make it so exclusive that we don't have that vendor that's even interested. You know, we do, we do want a little bit of both. So, I would lean a little more towards the joint side.
Yes, Councilman? I'm going to agree with you on that, that they're going to want that, and if it was me running it, I mean, as a third party, I'd want it, but they're going to have branding on the inside as well. So, they're going to have their employees wearing T-shirts, and signage inside, and stuff like that. But on the outside, for people driving by, I, I would totally support just, just having the City of Maricopa name.
I agree with you.
It's got to be a joint decision, like you said here, they're leaving, so, but at the
same time, it's got to be, at the end of the day, the city has to approve all branding and marketing. We don't want a third party going out there and marketing our facility without us knowing about it. So, again, jointly, jointly together, with us making the final decision on all branding and marketing.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, one of the advantages of working with a third party is that you have an expanded base for marketing. You want to cross-promote as much as possible, because this facility may draw people from beyond the City of Maricopa's boundaries. You can create this facility to be one that is a, that is a regional facility, and it brings in some regional efforts. So, you want to take advantage whenever you can in the cross-promotion of the branding. So, a lot of times, it would be the City of Maricopa's center as operated by, you know, so that you get a little bit of both, and you want to kind of cross-promote on your websites and things like that, try to get the word out there. We want people to use this, and certainly don't want it to sit there and, and collect dust.
Absolutely. I think we're going to agree with you on that, but Patty, does it sound all right so far? Good. I'm trying to put down the stats here.
Another question, so this third party is pretty much like a second owner, correct? Like, they're co-owner with the city?
Well, no. They're more like a partner.
Because I was saying, like, with the money wise, can't you just split the cost of utilities and, and split the cost of agents, and then whatever you profit off of fees, and that thing you divide it back, or?
Yeah, I, I think the, the simple answer to that is, is again, people are more partnership as brother and sister, splitting costs on different things. You know, our job as a city is not to necessarily make a profit off of this, at all, because you, the taxpayer, pay for it, but, but at the end of the day, it's, it's to still be able to operate it, so that means we have to break even. So, you know, the partner's going to have to pay some costs, and the city's going to have to pay some costs, so we can break even with its, with its operation, so that it stays open day after day, so that everybody can enjoy it. So, so there's really not a profitability in it for, for the city.
Have we asked, like, Ok Chen, and then a partner?
But that's one of the suggestions tonight. And so, again, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to get that RFP in, in, you know, some forward-moving progress, so that Ok Chen can be included in that. But at this point, Ok Chen wouldn't even know where to come in, because we don't have enough specifics yet.
Mr. Mayor, just in the future, if someone's going to ask a question like that, can they at least state their names for 15 minutes?
Absolutely.
So, we
Can, and we have, is it me stating?
Perfect, very good. Awesome. Okay, moving on here, um, let's see, number six. I'm sorry, complaint response staffing complaint. Third-party complaints.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council.
One hundred percent, one hundred percent.
Well, within the center, obviously, anything that the city has a program, and we would obviously feel the complaint if it's a city program, is something that is city-run. But on this one is specifically, let's say, we get a complaint that is something that the third party does. You know, where do you want that to go? Does it specifically, if it comes into us, do we go ahead and then pass that right off to the third party, and they're responsible for taking care of it, if it specifically deals with them? That, that's basically what it is. Obviously, if anything that's actually city responsibility, of course, we would be completely responsive and handle that. But again, a lot of times, what will happen is, when people see it's a city facility, the first place they'll call is to the state. Absolutely. So, basically on that one, how would you like us to handle complaints that come into the city that actually aren't city responsibility?
Vice Mayor.
You know, in all seriousness, it really does make sense with your last comment there, to have all complaints just come to the city. And then, and then it gives our third, and then it gives us some accountability, give towards our new partner.
Yeah, we can forward it, like, on the credit, along with you having a little, and things going on.
Right.
I suggest all city on that.
Yeah, agreed.
So, you want the, all the complaints to come to the city, and then we go back and we, we monitor those with the third party?
Yeah.
So, we have some
So, we give us that oversight and accountability, as well as kind of giving them something off their backs, or something. Okay, uh, let's see here, FFNEs, is that what we're asking?
FFNEs.
FFNEs, made by the city-owned operating.
And Mr. Mayor, and Members of Council, that would be your furnitures, fixtures, and equipment. Obviously, within the current multi-gen budget, we obviously have some furnitures, fixtures, and equipment that will be added to this facility, that is currently in the budget, but doesn't mean the third party cannot help to procure some of those. Also, too, what will happen when, for instance, a treadmill goes bad, an elliptical goes bad, we need extra basketballs, things like that, who would go ahead and furnish those? Obviously, if it was a city program, city would go ahead and furnish that, but if it's something that's run by that third party, you may want to go ahead and have them pick up that. Or again, it might be just for, you know, a lot of the big items in the facility as well, so it's not repair and maintenance, but it's actually furnitures, fixtures, and equipment.
Councilmember, do you want to add to that?
Vice Mayor Farrell just said what I was kind of thinking, that it's, it's probably got to be a joint venture there. You know, again, for, for anyone to bear the entire burden might be unfair, might be too much. So, you know, I, I guess my question would be, is, is there a way to stagger it, though? I mean, how much did we have, and I don't want to get too detailed here, but, but how much did we have set aside to, to do this, let's say we were to do that part all on our own? And, and, I mean, could we do it to where it was sufficiently staffed, and then say, you know, all, all the treadmills, all the weight sets, all the basketballs, everything like that? And then, moving forward, to put it in there, saying, anything that breaks or goes down, you're responsible for, or, or do we say, hey, we want 30%, if it's going to cost us $500,000, we want 30% from you, we're going to do the other 70, and then we're going to do a 70-30 split moving forward, they have the 70, we have the third? Something like that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, one of the things to think about, too, is that if you have a third-party operator, let's just use the fitness center, for example, they might want to do 10 treadmills and free weights, and another, we might want to do three treadmills and no free weights, or something. So, that's something that could also be negotiated. But I would think that if we were going to be requiring FFNEs to be picked up by a third-party provider, just to pencil out for them, we have a lot of business folks in this meet, this room, and on council, it's going to have to pencil out, what are they going to get for having to fork out a million dollars for FFNEs in this building? Then it would have to be a management fee or something. So, it's part of the negotiations, but, you know, we can put in the RFP that we would, you know, maybe find out who can get the least expensive, and maybe negotiate that as part of the process, but ultimately, just need a little guidance from you on, on where do you want the whole of the FFNEs to be picked up? But we can't ask for them to fork over everything, and not give them any kind of cash flow, otherwise they're already starting out upside down.
Absolutely. Thoughts, Councilman?
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, with the FFNEs, we would have to detail in the RFP, scope of services, what our expectations are. Do we expect them to provide all of the equipment, the pool skimmer, to the mats for the yoga classes, to the treadmills, to the chairs, the mats, the printers, the computers? Or are we going to be providing some of that? So, we're going to have to put that into the scope, so they know what the expectations are upfront.
Patty, with that, with that question you just asked, to me, it seems like that question can't be answered, but until we get closer to the end of the day, and, and what I'm saying is, it makes sense that if we're, whoever we partner with, and whatever programs they're responsible for, they should be responsible for those FFNEs. But we don't know that until we get to that program part.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Farrell, we can address the FFNEs at the end of this evening, when we decide whether we're going to be going with the third party, a joint, depending on the model that we look at. Because then we would be able to define a little bit better of what is it that we're going to expect from the third party, or if we're going to do it all, and just contract out for certain components over at the rec center, then we would have all of the FFNEs, except for the individual programs, they would have to provide their own equipment.
You just, you left that, or what are you guys responsible for, or what is the fees for programs for?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Farrell, the question comes to my mind that is, how do we hold them accountable for maintaining, was to make sure that there is no damage to the desks, to the computers, to the printers, to the treadmills, that the city will be responsible for? We would have to detail that in the RFP, so that they know what they are, or what our expectations are.
Couldn't every done? Could you, if that's so specific? It goes up, if you leave it too open, future councils are going to be inheriting some expenses if they hadn't gone a line. They're looking at this to say, what did you guys, who is she? And lady.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Brown, we do need that type of detail in the scope of services for the RFP, to define what are the expectations, what do we expect them to take care of, and replace, and to provide, what is it that the city will provide and provide? It might be one of those things, you know, like, City Manager Fisher had indicated, well, turning buildings upside down, whatever falls loose, they are responsible for, what is attached, we are.
Councilwoman Kimball, and then, Councilwoman Gussi, do you have something to add?
Well, I was going to bring up the whole, when we lend out the park to the Maricopa Little League, we just provide the park. They, they maintain, they put on the bases, they bring their bats, their gloves, everything. So, I mean, if we were to provide the bare minimum of the location, and have them bring all the toys that they need to run this, I mean, that, how unreasonable would that be?
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, and again, basically going to one of the Vice Mayor's point, is depending on what the city runs within the facility, and what a third party would run, typically, a lot of times, you'd be responsible for the FFNE, if that was that. The other question that was asked of Patty, let's say they are using something that's the city, I did notice in most of the contracts, it does talk about that if something's damaged, partners are held responsible for that as well. Another point that was brought up is, you know, is there any way to eventually kind of cycle out things? And with any good facility, whether it be a park or a multi-gen center, equipment lists have to be made, you do the data purchase, you do a lifespan of that equipment, when it needs to replace, and then, again, what would be that fee, that time? So, let's say, for instance, a treadmill lifespan is three years. Okay, you know, you just put in three years. You're also able to flip the tread over, so you're able to get a second life out of it, but you know if you had seven treadmills in at one time, they're $2,000 apiece, and three years they have to replace, and you can start recycling, and you can look, and again, it can maybe be a split, where it's 50-50. City picks up 50% of the cost, third party picks up 50% of the cost, depending on the use of that equipment as well.
Go to Councilwoman Kimball, and then I have one to kind of pass between a balance board.
So, Jennifer, your research, did you, in the other municipalities, what did they do with FFNEs? That's one of our first questions, I have one more.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Kimball, with a couple of them, they did already provide FFNE, since they were city-run facilities, and they were built with city money. Originally, there was FFNE that was already with the facility, but then after that, the third party would go ahead and replace the FFNE that they were using.
So, here's what I'm thinking, in regards to the administrative side of the facility, at the facility, maybe, maybe the, the city provide, you know, the printers and the computers up front, and if something's damaged, then they would be responsible for replacing it. But as far as like basketballs, and the pool skimmer, all that kind of stuff, I, I mean, I would think that the third party should be, should be accountable for providing those things, because their instructors, and their trainers, or whatever, are going to be running the classes, making sure the equipment's taken care of, and all that kind of stuff. So, I, I would be on board with, like, the administrative side, computers, printers, stuff up front, the city would, would cover that, and then, and chairs, and couches, or whatever else, and TVs. But as far as like sports equipment, and, and very perishable stuff, very fragile stuff, they would have to, have to pay.
So, again, I'm hearing a joint here, Brenda, do you have something you want to add there? I'm going to go wrong.
With, with, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, with regard to software systems, oftentimes, the third party will have their own system, and they might need a specialized computer, so it is pretty common for those, those are considered like personal equipment, that those things would be picked up by the third party, only because it all depends on their software system states, you know, that, that's just something to say.
Okay, so, it's a third party for everything.
Right, thank you, Mayor, Council. You can be so specific in that, with regard to FFNE, especially if you give them with hundreds of thousands of dollars of fitness equipment, you've got national buying power, national leasing power, sophisticated maintenance, even on the iPad, real-time management, the even on the iPad, real-time management, the technology systems, the rotation systems of them, already predetermined and outsourced in part of services, so as Patty indicated, with FFNE, you can outline in an RFP, with a high degree of specificity, the role of the community partner, and the majority of the role usually is for the community partner folk, and from that, VCD technology, software systems, fitness, equipment, fitness design, maintenance, that normally is the responsibility, with the Almirage, youth and multi-gen center, their accountability is with the community partner, so.
Perfect. Yes, Councilman?
I look at this as a business, all these businesses that have to start up their companies, they have to buy the equipment and everything else, they didn't turn a profit until a couple of years, am I wrong, until a couple of years after they started their business, so, looking at this as a business, if we were to go forward to the third-party, I still believe that the third-party should be responsible for all of the FFNEs.
Yes, Troy Maltz, well, I agree with that, I was under the assumption that the bond measure provided for a certain amount of equipment to be provided, it was open, so what, was there a dollar amount that the bond measure provided for that said, we can buy this amount of equipment, was that, was that in there?
Well, to you, Brenda first, and I'll go first.
I think I can bring this one first, jump in if I can speak, Mr. Member, Council, Mr. Maltz, thank you for the question, the bond will pay for equipment going into it, what the bond would not do is pay for replacement as things start to wear out, because once we go out to bond once, then as things start to need to be replaced and need to be switched out, then that's something that would be an additional cost, and have to come through either the CIP fund, or for the third-party, or some sort of shared cost, am I right, Brenda?
Yes, ma'am. So, so it sounds again, basically what Counselor Kimball said, which was, you know, kind of, we're doing it with our stuff, and then to add what Counselor Guss said, which is that the third-party, and all of the wrong, said, the third-party would be responsible for picking up a lot of those things, you know, moving forward, with a certain amount of things that we're responsible for, but for the most part, the third-party is responsible for. So again, joint, but with a larger, throughout the course of operation, the responsibility following the third-party for replacement, is that, is that what I'm hearing, then correctly, Councils? Yes, 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 okay, there we go. We're getting there. We're out on here, city or third-party at reception of front desk?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, a great example that I found on this one was the city of Tempe North Community Center, on that one, they have several different partners that works out of that center, it's Boys and Girls Club, YMC, Transport La Causa, Headstart, Maricopa County, with that facility, it is a city-owned facility, and the city has some programs that run out of there, they run the fitness element and things like that, they actually have city staff at the front desk, as well as staff from some of the other agencies that they go ahead and partner with. Obviously, if we have certain programs here that are run by the city, more than likely you want city staff there to answer questions specifically for those, but then also if there's programs that are run by a third-party, they would also have a front desk member as well, so when you talk about this, and again, something jointly, more than likely, that's something that you probably want to do, since it's going to be a joint facility in different partnerships, you more than likely don't want a third-party necessarily answering questions about city programs and vice versa.
Well, I guess my question there is, is we talked about housing and community services department there, so, I mean, if, is that something that city staff would, I guess, want to do, I mean, would they prefer to do it that way, where one of their own is perhaps using a dual role, as a part-time receptionist at the front desk, or, you know, would city staff members be needing to be housed at the front desk, and then they're able to perform a dual role, I mean, what is your thoughts on that?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, on that, we really have to look at staffing levels, if, currently with the programming levels that we have right now, most of the coordinators have a very busy load, currently, we do have an administrative assistant that is in City Hall, that, so we have to go ahead and we have to transition a position over there for that specifically. Again, there can be some cross-communication, for instance, there can be general facility questions that both parties could answer, do you have a dance room, what term are the hours of operation, you know, things like that, but again, there may be different registration prices, different registration programs, so again, if those are not shared, you again would probably want some dual staff in that position as well.
So, okay, thoughts, Council?
Joint, joint process there as well, then?
Okay. Any other concerns with that? How's the operation?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, hours of operation, that's something the city has to just determine, obviously, most centers do open up early in the morning, maybe about 5:30, 6 o'clock, you want to make sure that you get the people who want to get that good workout before going to work, generally, then, usually in the daytime, centers are used by top classes, seniors, things like that, and obviously, coming in in the afternoon, you've got your after-school, your teams, and then generally, in the evening, again, you have a lot of people that are coming home from work that want to work out, there's classes, sporting leagues, things like that, so generally, centers are usually open rather early in the morning, and usually close into the evening hours, and that's usually during Monday through Friday, maybe closing a little bit early on Saturday, and then limited hours on Sunday, so that completely depends on how many hours of operation you want to get out of that facility, and then what you want to see in there.
On the Rollsford WDB report, obviously, they had to come up with numbers, were they giving us a certain hours of operation in their thought process for those numbers, does anyone know that?
Generally, with most centers, they're open anywhere from 80 to 100 hours a week.
So, thoughts, Council, Vice Mayor?
Recommend joint with the city, have the city final decision.
Okay, a joint with the city, final decision, like that idea? Okay, joint with the city having the final decision. All right? Perfect, we need the liability then.
Next up, Mr. Mayor, and members of council, with liability...
Sorry, I went onto my stuff.
Obviously, both parties have liability, number one, with the city still owning that facility, there's still a certain amount of liability that the city has, also running programs out of there, as well as the third-party, what generally you do is you do an additional insured, you name each other on both of the policies, you have policy limits that are set currently by our legal department, so on that one, both parties would have to, you know, basically assume a certain amount of liability for that facility and for the programs that are offered, and you want to make sure that both entities are protected.
Does any, does any one entity have more of a responsibility, I mean, I know that we've talked, I mean, just kind of in brief, if, if the city takes on more responsibility, do we have to have more federal policy there discussing, or how does that work?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, basically, depending on, every city has different types of limits that they do, so some may say, okay, well, we'll have a third-party come in, we want a $2 million, $4 million aggregate, we need to be named additional insured, have a certificate holder, it completely depends on the city, each city has different requirements, currently, what we do is a lot of times, when we have contract employees or things like that, or contractors that work for us, again, we're going to require insurance, because number one, we want to make sure that if they're off in the program, and if anything happens to a participant in that program that we have, that they're covered and they can't necessarily come after the city, so it's kind of on a joint like that, because again, depending on what happens in the facility, a lot of times, in our litigious society, they go after both parties, it depends, and a lot of times, too, you have to remember, we have what's called here in Arizona is a recreational statute, and what that does is that covers basically recreational activities of people that are doing specific activities that are recreational, when they visit a site, most of the time, they're held liable for negligence, so it would be, for instance, if you had a piece of machinery that you knew was faulty, and you kept it out there, and somebody got hurt, and you could prove negligence, but for the most part, a recreational statute, if people are in a facility or in a park doing what they're intended to do, and there really is no negligence, then a lot of times, people, you know, again, don't have really the ability to sue, the other part is, don't forget, with whatever program we have, and we currently have this in the community services department, is anybody that will come in, whether it has a membership or doing a program, they will end up signing a waiver of liability that will have people hold harmless and things like that, it'll be both entities that would have that, because you always want to make sure you have people properly registered, you make sure that any, you know, child is 18, the parent knows they're there, things like that, so there's many different things in place legally, and I know that currently, a lot of third-parties, such as Boys and Girls Club, YMC, all cities, basically have a lot of that liability taken care of, because they currently run programs.
So it seems to be like, that the third-party would want as much of that as it could, right, because if they're talking buying power from the multiple facilities that they have then, that they operate, and wouldn't you want to shift that from the city to them primarily, and us as a secondary?
With the city being an additional insured, especially if the city's name is on the outside of the building, if somebody gets hurt or something, they're coming after both.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so, so basically, then it's a, you say it's a joint, or would you say that's a third?
City, city is secondary, they would be primary, so they would have the primary responsibility.
So third-party, primary, but city's secondary.
Some of these are more of a yes/no, we put city kind of primary, but we're getting the gist of it.
All right, city use of facility for meetings, town halls, events?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this would be basically city use in this facility, when talking to a couple of the cities that we went ahead and interviewed, some of them said that they did kind of come into some bumps in the road on being able to utilize some of the facilities, and a lot of it for meetings, some of them established basically, sort of a schedule of how many days, how many nights, some of them even said the city had use between this time and this time, the other one said that, as long as the reservation was made, 30 days out, 10 days out, things like that, but however, some of them were finding that they were getting bumped, so on, something like this, you know, we may want to put in there determining that we have city use for meetings on certain dates and times, calendars can be submitted, which if a third-party can submit a calendar of dates, and two, availability of time that third-party can give for different city meetings and things like that, but you want to make sure that once you schedule, let's say, for instance, a special council meeting, that you wouldn't want to go ahead and have that bumped, or it wouldn't, they wouldn't have the ability to bump you out of a room when something is scheduled.
You know, forgive me if I'm wrong here, but I think that with the severe lack of space, we have new things in this, in this town, but I think the city would want final oversight on that, am I correct in that thought process? Okay, so let's put the city down for that, as having final oversight.
Okay, revenue sharing.
I think the next two are more of a yes/no.
Okay, so revenue sharing and space for city staff offices, no room to city hall, I think that the second one is kind of a, you know, no-brainer, is that we need to be able to house them there, so that's definitely a yes for the city, and then on the revenue sharing, that seemed like, based on our earlier answer, is that we wanted to see the revenue come in first and foremost, is that correct?
So we could write the RFP to say that, with your response, and Patty told me this is clear enough, please provide a model for revenue sharing, what your model for revenue sharing with the city would be, and that would be a decision factor, so that sound good?
Absolutely. Okay, we're next to, I have the impact of the voter approved.
That's an N, please do be just kind of thoughtful, we're going to ensure that we'll make sure that we don't put the city in any type of trouble there.
Term of contract?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is very good, it depends on how long you would like to enter into an agreement with a third-party partner, some of them that we encountered were five years, some were 10 years, for instance, the one that is coming up in Almirage, I want to say is three, so it depends, the ones in North Las Vegas and Vegas, the ones in Vegas were 10 years, the ones in North Las Vegas were five years, now, please remember, there is the ability to, there is the ability to have renewals as well, so what you can start off with saying is, I mean, you could do something, even one or two, we have like a three-year agreement, so you can say, you'd like a three-year agreement with, you know, three three-year renewals, you want a five-year agreement with two five-year renewals, obviously, with any contract or anything else, there will obviously always be some type of termination clause, whether it be for the city, or again, whether it be also for that third-party, you want to make sure that both parties, eventually, if something happens, it could be catastrophic, that you always have a way out before the end of that, or again, if people aren't meeting the expectations, that's another way, but it just depends on how long you want to make that initial contract, and you can always have renewals.
I'm going to call Ron back over here. Ron, what do you, just again, from experience, what is the norm that you succeed?
Well, as we indicated, I say Almirage is 30 years, but it's tied to the debt financing and revenue sharing model, so, so they're, I was very enjoying, with why the brand is so very important, you don't want a compromised and limited amount of time, and then, so, but we even discussed concurring tenure of this model to our operating models, too, there, so, but I think, from our perspective, that if we look at the community partnership model, and you were looking at five-year increments, I don't think that would be a diminishing goal, and having the appropriate exit clauses that provided immediate expectation, I don't think everybody wants to be on the performance side of that.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you. Counselor, Paul?
Shorter, three years, the shorter the better for me.
The shorter you go, when you send out the RFP, the probability of you getting any qualified, potentially qualified nonprofits is limited with a three-year contract, especially if they're providing all that, but there's not much other stuff, like, no one's getting even sent in a proposal, well, we know that, you know, but who knows if anybody else will, so.
So should we start with, then, you know, something like that, a five-year, you know, shorter, five there, that way it gives us a chance to reevaluate, and then, you know, there's that potential for negotiating in, you know, subsequent, subsequent terms or renewals, but again, with, especially maintaining the out clause?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and I'm jumping ahead to number 19, nonprofit versus for-profit, one of the things the bond council advised us on is that we would need, the term of contract is going to need to be finally said by the bond council, because you can have a, for the RFP process, we can have a target, but because of the fact that this was voter-approved, and it's being paid for with bond funds, if you go with a non, that you have more flexibility to go with a longer term, if you're going with a for-profit, there is a cutoff of, like, you start getting beyond 10 years, and it includes renewals, then you're getting into some potential trouble with the IRS with those bonds, so we would want to make sure that if you go with a for-profit, it's shorter, a nonprofit, you have more flexibility for length.
Does that change anybody's thought process, then?
I mean, should we stick with five or whatever?
Counselor?
So, let's set the target of three to five, and see what, what kind of comes back with, that way you get the flexibility of the minimum of five, you know, should, should be on the high side.
I'm not cool with three.
Five or four.
Yeah, three is not realistic.
I don't think three's optimal.
I'm going to go with three to five.
Counselor, Vice Mayor, if you'd like to weigh in?
I'm all for five.
Okay, looks like it's, we're going with five, then. Sorry, Councilmen?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, do you want an option listed in the RFP for the option of the five-year, one five-year renewal?
Yeah, I think, I think that, yeah, that should be in one of the negotiating tools, is, is, subsubstantial rules are based on performance.
Thank you. No, you can split the baby on that, you can make it a three-year renewal, if you want, instead of a five-year renewal, you know, just trying to...
Okay. Be cool with that, a three-year renewal? Yeah, sure, and it all depends on performance, exactly, you know?
This is working out, I like it, good negotiating here, okay, so, yeah, so it's up to the three, start there.
Thank you.
Perfect.
The next is more of a yes/no, do you want them to have sponsorship and fundraising responsibilities, I think that's probably an easy answer, but we wanted to just run by you.
Yeah, absolutely. So, and that's primarily on the third-party side, I would imagine?
Yeah, that's one of the benefits, or that they would create a special nonprofit, we would just ask them to present to us their model for doing so.
Absolutely. Back to, then, to repairs, that kind of goes back to what we were talking about before, is what Counselor Kimball was talking about, thoughts on that, Guss?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, again, one of the examples that we totally loved was how, when you flip something upside down, that was really great, that was actually, came from the city of Las Vegas, and I liked the way he explained that to me, so it just really depends on, you know, the scope of repairs, what I did find in most of the agreements is, most of the cities either picked up the repair costs, or it was split, very few had the third-party completely making all the repairs, because of the fact that it was city-owned, that doesn't mean that we can't ask that, but I did find most of them either had some type of joint, or again, maybe city only picked up minor, third-party picked up major, depends on how you guys would like to go on that, but I definitely, you know, I liked about, kind of, turning the facility upside down, and shake what falls out, so, depends on what you like to do.
Vice Mayor says joint?
I'm in agreeance with the joint, but I do like the example of turning it upside down, kind of provides some accountability for, you know, what is permanent and is ours versus what is, you know, somebody else is there assisting us in this facility, that they're responsible for those things as well.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, one thing that we would definitely want to address would be care of the facility, so I think that if there was anything that was found that was not cared for properly, and one thing that just comes to mind for me, aquatic equipment is very sensitive, with the amount of pools that you have, you just want to make sure, too, whoever's taking care of things like that, probably want to go ahead and have something in there, where if there's any type of neglect or misuse, that that would be picked up by the party that was responsible for that, just saying.
I like that. Counselor Kimball, anything, you go with that, Kimball, Paul, Vice Mayor? Okay, you like that idea, moving forward with that, perfect, let's see here, around the procurement area, procurement for sub-services and goods?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, one of the things that the both of the vendor reports did talk about was, a lot of times, a third-party does have the ability to go ahead and get goods, sometimes for better prices, things like that, obviously, the city, we have certain procurement policies that we have to go ahead and do, but part of it is, too, with this one, is with the subcontractors, is, a lot of what some of the vendors and people we hear tonight was keeping it local, so on that one, you know, do you want to put, you can go ahead and put a stipulation that you would like to see a certain percentage of vendors or contractors come from the local community, and again, on that one, you do need to be careful, that you don't set your expectations too high, where again, someone wouldn't be able to meet that requirement, but again, you are talking about, you know, wanting to procure goods and services and keeping as much local as you can.
Where possible.
If absolutely where possible. Because again, if there isn't, if let's say there's the demand, they have the demand, but there's no supply to meet it, you can't necessarily completely hold a third-party or even the city responsible. If you can't find, if you can't find the supply or the staff or things like that, you have to go outside. But again, at least show that you couldn't find that, there was an effort there.
Now, along those lines, I know that I've spoken with builders along those same issues, and, you know, they sometimes have the, have requirements that are of such to protect them, protect the city, and so it tends to preclude smaller businesses. So do we, are we supposed to then set, you know, again, a broad brush here and say, again, we're looking local first, but if they don't exist, then they really are moving on, or, I mean, because I guess my question is, how specific do we want to get? Because I mean, there are certain, there are certain people that can do what's maybe, you know, the third-party wants them to do, but they don't have a big enough umbrella policy and insurance, and so suddenly they're excluded, and they say, oh, we tried, but now we're off over here, you know, going to one of our vendors. I mean, at what point do we need to kind of balance that out a little bit? What are your thoughts?
If they can't meet the demands of the contract, they either have their insurance, they don't get the gig, but as long as the nonprofit or for-profit, whoever decides, goes to the local, or reaches out locally first, then that's, that would be what I would support.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, one thing also to remember on this as well, with some of the procurement subcontractors, another great example is with an aquatic facility. You do want to make sure that whoever is chosen to work with the aquatic facility, there's certain certifications that are absolutely necessary. You don't want a lifeguard out there that doesn't have lifeguard training, you don't want them out there without CTR. So part of it might be too, is making sure that any subcontractors or people working in the facility that have to have appropriate certifications have those certifications so that you, you know, that the city doesn't wind up in trouble with the health department or different codes and things like that as well on that.
Absolutely. Okay, so we have local preference there. Perfect, thank you very much. And then on to nonprofit versus for-profit.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, that was something that was brought up back in May 1st, that you wanted non-for-profit partners. Obviously, currently, the city works with for-profit vendors, some of them spoke tonight, so it just depends on if you completely just want nonprofit or if you're open to for-profit as well.
Is this also going to be determined by the bond council as well though? Because if we say, yes, we want a nonprofit, but that we'd like to see them work with local for-profits maybe in certain instances or whatever along those lines, does that, that creates a potential issue, correct?
It creates an issue, we would have to run it by bond council when they're ready to let the contracts.
Okay, so it seems like then the preference automatically ought to be nonprofit, assuming that's what we had said earlier on in the previous council meeting, but again, just...
A lot of intentions spelled out by members of the, my colleagues, it has to be nonprofit.
Okay, so again, focus on the nonprofit, because that trouble with bond council can go along with what the council's already said. Perfect. All right, let's see, integration of current programs and services.
Mr. Mayor, council, this is basically just asking, the community services department already runs certain current programs, probably start up a couple new ones in the next year, and just want to find out, you know, do you want the city to continue running programs and to integrate those into the new center as well? Because there's certain things that the community already enjoys, that staff does well. Again, it doesn't mean if we don't have a partner that we can't even start joint programs, but basically, this is the integration of staff into the building and the current programs that the city already runs. Because currently, we do use onsite facilities for many of these programs, but with the new center, we would be able to move those into that center.
I'm all for integration.
The idea of bringing the programs on and looking at expanding them with the city, the city staff.
Okay, so again, just...
How about, how about join the city maker?
Well, yeah, that's where I was going to say, is that you're still going to have to bring in, if you're bringing in a third-party, that they're going to have their ideas and their thoughts, but, you know, again, we need, if we go with that, we're going with that five, final oversight. So the city has final oversight, yet again, the idea is to work jointly together with them, to develop this program.
Jennifer, what item is this? Can you read that item again, please?
Integration of current programs and services.
Okay.
For example, we do basketball, volleyball now. Do you want our basketball, volleyball program to cease and they take it over? Do you want them to integrate ours into their facility?
I was trying to figure out what the difference was between this one and programs, but it's current programs.
This would be current, yeah. This is, Mr. Mayor, vice mayor, this is currently what we offer in the activity guide and things like that.
So again, joint, is it, council, final oversight?
Number 21, I think, is a repeat, so apologize on that. But we did come up with a couple others as we were sitting here, is that, and I think this is a yes/no, do you want the computer software to be compatible with the city? Because that makes it very easy for citizens to enroll if our systems are compatible. And so we have to say, do you want to ask them to have a system that is? So we'll be yes on that one, and see nodding yes. And then the last one, which is really the big question that we need to know, once you take a scroll up and you look at everything that you're looking for, the big question of the night is, do you want us to look at a single provider so that, because we would structure the RFP this way, say we are seeking a single provider that meets the following criteria to do the following thing, or do you want us to parse it out and have aquatics be a contract, the center be a contract, the teen center be a contract, the fitness center be a contract, the senior center be a contract, and so on? So we just need that direction from you as well.
Thoughts on that?
What about both?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I have seen some of the RFPs, what it did say is, one party could bid on all parts of it, other parties could just one part of it. And I did see that in a couple of the RFPs.
There you go.
And how would you divide those parts?
What you would do is, Mr. Mayor, councilman, I'm going to see, what you would do is, you would just identify the areas that you would have for partnerships, meaning the aquatics, the fitness, things like that. So you could go ahead and actually have them parceled out, and it means depending on how the provider, they could, let's say it was a person who just did aquatics, could go ahead and just do aquatics, or you would end up having a, one provider that could say, hey, I can do all of this. So they can either bid on one part or on all of it, and you can write the RFP that way. Because you would basically, you're going to talk about the services that you want to do, so you can, again, the services would be out, because aquatics is very different than teens and very different than fitness, so you'd have to line each of those things out.
Councilman Timble?
How would we determine what parts to break out to put in the RFP? Like if Mr. Mullins wanted to run the gym portion of it, and he was the only person that brought a proposal forward for the gym, and then the only other proposal that we got was from the YMCA to run the whole facility, but is he out, or do we go to YMCA and say, hey, would you give up this portion? Do it, how does that work there?
I've done this a couple of different times, taken strong contracts in my career, ten one-time here in Maricopa, will be parceled, obviously not on operation of multi-gym facility, but on the design or administration function with regard to a project. The one thing I would say is, you can do it, you've done it before, but I want to make it clear to everybody that when you do the actual operation as a committee, if you have, you have to make a decision upfront based on the proposals you've received, if it's going to be all-for-one, if it's going to be parcelated. And the way that you do that is you look at the part, the functions that you've capped off, if you will, to use a glacier term, right? The pieces that you've capped off, and using your example would be the gym. If you get a, some proposals that look very good for the gym and swimming pool, that may sway you to say, hey, maybe it makes most sense to separate this out, but if you get a proposal that blows you away, that's somebody that does the whole thing, you can't really do both. So you have to pretty much make a decision upfront. Do we have something that's completely fantastic, that's a one-person operation upfront, or does it make more sense to break this out? And in some cases, and the last time I did this, this was the case, we had a situation that was only broken into three pieces. We got two proposals that just proposed on the individual piece that were going to do such a nice job. We had to approach the person that proposed on all three and say, hey, are you okay just doing one piece of the three? So it's complicated, it can be done, but I just want to let you know, typically, you're faced with that decision upfront. Does it make more sense for one, or does it make more sense to break it down to the others?
But isn't this where they're coming from the RFP? I mean, according to what Greisner just said about both, if I'm not mistaken here, both being that, you know, we want to put out the RFP to say, hey, we're looking for one then to do this, right? I mean, it's like buying the tub of mayo at Costco, right? We're expecting a better price for this or a better deal if we get to do all of it. However, they may come back and say, we only want to do the one. And so, isn't that how we're trying to portray this? Then regardless of where the decision point lies, isn't it, we're only, we're figuring that out after the proposals come in, not necessarily before?
There's one more option, which is team, emphasize team. And so instead of parceling, instead of picking three different projects and evaluating based on that, we could write the RFP in such a way that says, we're looking for one operator, and we do this all the time. Architecton, sit right back here, that's exactly what we're doing on their contract. Architecton is the prime, but we've allowed them to have sub consultants, and matter of fact, we prefer it, especially on design projects, have sub consultants that are part of the team. So you could have a proposal that comes back in that's one entity, you know, picks up on one entity that does it all, or you could have somebody that comes in that's a team, that X nonprofit is prime, and then they bring in the gentleman from the gym and the lady from the gymnastics center and others underneath them as a team. Instead of parcelating, you're encouraging team proposals.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, when you structure the RFP, we can do it multiple ways, like Brenton said, and that is why I was asking for very detail on this, because we can say that we need somebody to operate the aquatics, and we can say we need the liability, and we need the city use and that sort of thing. Lay out exactly what our expectations are. Step two or item two is the fitness center, we need somebody to do this. At the end, within the RFP, we state that we can, we reserve the option to award to one or to multiples. And when we do the evaluation, we can take a look at it and say, okay, here's company A, Semitale A, is saying that they can do it all, and they will submit a proposal on each one of those items. Company B says, I don't know, only do two, and they will submit a proposal on that and take N/A for the rest of them. We can look at it and say, company B has a better option for us. So that is taken out of the mix for A. They can do everything else then. So it is a complicated process, and it's very time-consuming, but it also addresses what the needs are for what you are asking us to do here.
So based on this conversation, where are you thinking? Is it councilman, I'm going to add a question.
Yes, I have a question.
Jennifer, I know within this process, is the city going to have a chance to give their bid? Let's say Parks, Recs and Library wants to take over the baseball, soccer, dog park area. Are they going to have a say to bid on it? I mean, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, the city is also an entity that we're kind of overlooking in this whole RFP process, and we said it time and time again, you know, we want the city involved as much as we want the city to run some of this, and I understand this is the RFP process, but what I'm saying is, are we going to get examples back from the city where we do comparisons, here's our RFP, this is, they're going to be, so ABC company is going to do this? Are we going to get comparisons as far as what the city could offer?
No.
No. We'd only be looking at the third parties.
So describe, address that though, based on, you know, the park side of it versus the multi-gym and the car.
Right. The direction from council has been to, the philosophy was for a third-party or parties provider for the rec center, the rec center, multi-gym, and would include the athletic center. The park would still be operated by staff. That is not going to be part of it, which I think you said you know. But just to clarify for everybody's sake, is that the park would not be part of this, just running the multi-gym center and its several components, which include a fitness center, aquatic center, you know, teen center, all those different things, that's what would be in there. We would just need, again, to structure it properly, we need to know which of those big components you would want to be eligible for them to check off to bid on independently, separately.
And that's why we put under here, as far as, under the program category and the current programs to, that we want to have joint discussion of that, then they have the final approval, because we don't want to duplicate any programs that we're already doing. Makes sense? So that's why it's under those two categories, it's with the city's final approval.
I'm sorry, I'm going back to the models, the three models you started with. The model one was all city staff-operate, model two was city plus numerous third-parties, and model three was all third-parties. So the only discussion now we're having at this point for the RFP is just model three.
No.
Well, and then I, you happened to come in a little bit into my spiel at the beginning is that the council directed staff on May 1st to go with the third-party philosophy. So what I stated when I presented the three models at the time I did, and I stated a couple times, was it was more or less to show what other cities have done and to take advantage of the advantages in our RFP process and to avoid the disadvantages of that model in our RFP process. But that tonight, we were not selecting a model, we're selecting the components for the RFP.
So that was provided, as part of the, as part of this whole PowerPoint presentation, that was provided more than anything for the history of where it would come from. So then if you create a distinction and an understanding of, you can't know what, I always go back to, you can't really know what sweet tastes like unless you know what bitter tastes like, right? You've got to have both polar opposites, so you can compare and then see if there's a middle ground that you want to work off of. So, yeah, so that's back to the RFP side of it. And so, moving forward on this particular item, I am hearing that, again, we want a kind of a team building. Am I hearing that right? And council hasn't spoken to that much.
Does that fit into how you're describing, how you can put it out as one and then parcel out individually as the expertise comes in from the...
Mr. Mayor, councilman, Potter, yes, it does fit in with that for a simple reason. When you're looking at a RFP, we're looking at someone that we contract with, and whether they have, if someone who wants to contract for ballet classes, but they also want to contract, or they might want to subcontract with someone to do jazz dance, because they don't do ballet. We're contracted with ballet instructor as a firm, as a company, and if they want to come and present a team, they can.
And just so, as part of, Kathy's going to talk about the procurement process here, is that that's something that would be done on the administrative side, and we would do the evaluation. City council members don't get involved in the approval of the RFP or the advancement of the RFP, because you ultimately will vote on, given a contract that's related to it. So it kind of muddies the water if you're involved in the approval process. So to keep the process very neat and clean, then that would be something that the, we would create a group that would evaluate it based on their professional experience, and then they would bring forward to you a recommendation for those contracts. So just so you kind of understand where it would go from there, we would not go back to, say, here are the people that apply for the fitness center, which one do you all want? That would be done on the administrative side of this process.
So for the businesses sitting out in the crowd here, we need to give a clear message to them, because I don't want these businesses to think that in order to continue, and I'm talking about the business that are contracted already with city services, okay? We don't want to give the wrong message to these businesses for them to think that in order for me to continue to do my contracted services with the city, I better run out and become a nonprofit entity. That's not, that's not the message we want to deliver here. That's why we put under current programs, main programs, that it'll be a joint decision with the city as the final decision maker on that, because we want to bring our current programs that we already have contracted out with these existing businesses that work within the city to implement them into this program. So I don't want these businesses out there to think that in order to continue to do what they do with the city, what they've done for the last one, two, three, five, nine years, that they got to go out and turn their business into a nonprofit, because that's not what we're saying. Am I right?
Correct. Well, we would, the part of the integration would be that we don't have, we don't have a location to hold these. Like, let's say we're teaching yoga right now, or dance, or gymnastics, we don't have a location to host these. So to integrate those programs, if we have an agreement with the gymnastics group, then in order for us to provide those, we have to house them and work with this third-party provider to house them in that facility. Where we run into why it would be, it's good that, to hear that you want to have oversight of the programs, is that let's say we want to do it at that facility, and we have to pay rent, because we're a city, we don't, we're not really owning it, so we have to, we own it, but you know what I'm saying? Is that we would be taking away that space from their revenue generating. So let's say our dance or yoga classes are five bucks a class, but in order for us to, but in order for us to, then the third-party wants to also offer a yoga class, and they can offer it three dollars a class. Then we're even competing between the city and the third-party. So the beauty of the integration, and the beauty of having council have the full oversight, is they can say, "You know what, yoga classes or dance classes, the city's going to handle that. Going to integrate that into there." So you're absolutely right. Now, there are some components, and I'll just use the fitness center, because it's the first to come to mind, that that fitness center would need to have a nonprofit to bid on and run the fitness center. Now, let's say they were just offering bodybuilding 101. Now, if they had a contract with the city, they could offer bodybuilding 101. It could be done at our rec center for X dollars, or they could do it at their facility on their own. But if they're contracted with the city, it would be under our programs for a certain dollar at our city facility, not at their facility. So that's how they would have to work if they didn't run the center themselves, because of the nonprofit status.
Yeah, I'm just trying to be clear to the audience out there. I understand, but I just want to make sure that our citizens understand. Because I don't want to run it out and try to declare nonprofit status if they're already going business with the city.
But at the same time, if I put myself in the shoes of a third-party provider, if the city's telling me, "I can offer dance and yoga and gymnastics, because the city wants to offer it through their existing programs, then worth the money in it for me." So those are what we're kind of talking about, that there has to be a little bit of a give and take in order for it to be beneficial for a third-party operator, or you're not going to have anybody apply. Because they're going to say, "Well, you want me to come in and run the facility, but you're not going to allow me to run any programs." So, you know, I'm trying to think like both sides of the issue here. So that's where the integration will be key. It might be that we give up, and I wouldn't want to sit here and definitively say, "No, you know what, we're not going to do yoga anymore." We're saying integration, not necessarily coexistence.
So with the integration, we're talking about, certainly, just again for clarity purposes, we're talking about talking, talking with, wherever this third-party is, talking with them and organizing together what the program or the curriculum is going to be from a overarching standpoint of what takes place at this center. Some will be operated by them, and some will be operated by us in our center. Is that correct, I'm saying? So any thoughts on that?
I saw a member of the audience have their hand up earlier. I don't know if we had anybody in the audience that wanted to add something, Mr. Mayor.
I may be out of order, but... But when we were homeless, I'm talking about the seniors, and didn't have a place to stay, Brian took us in any kind of fitness, and he had our meetings there every week. So I would like to see Brian considered for the fitness, for the, for the... Thank you very much.
Going back to Brent's point, multiple parties being able to team for the bid, and then Brent was saying that, you know, we have to have a nonprofit third-party bid. Could that nonprofit third-party team with a for-profit business to submit the bid? So I mean, you're not preventing the nonprofit third-party from subcontracting with for-profit companies, is that correct?
I'm looking at Tom to tell about our bond council, we're getting into that complex...
Right, right. We could have a private for-profit run the whole thing. We would have to just make sure we structured the agreement, and it gets very technical, not to compromise the taxability of the money that we build this with. If it's, if it's a nonprofit, it's, the rules are a lot less lax. What the government doesn't want to see is poor business profiting off of tax-exempt money, right? But with that said, we could have nonprofits absolutely contract with for-profits. We could do the whole thing for profit. Once we get into for-profits, we just have to use a little bit of diligence to structure the agreements correctly, not to violate the terms.
Right, but you could definitely have that mixture. So, so let's say, using Mr. Mullins, so we're seeing some big companies. Let's say the nonprofit third-party comes in, bids on the whole thing, but they teamed with Mr. Mullins to tie staff part of it, and they will see if Mr. Mullins could actually execute that part of the contract. They could do that, right?
They could absolutely do that. We are still subject to the rules, and so we would have to make sure that any agreement structured between whether it be the nonprofit and the for-profit, or if they happen to contract with us, would still have to follow the rules, but that could absolutely...
Which may limit the timeframe.
Right.
That's really, that's really what the key factor, what the council written, and what is the timeframe of that agreement. It's more limited for a for-profit than a nonprofit.
Mr. Mayor, I have a clarification that I need from council. You have stated that whether you wanted a nonprofit or for-profit, it was unanimous that it was to be a nonprofit. Is that, does that mean that when we put out in the RFP, any for-profits cannot submit a proposal?
We can't secure that, even if it's been given a lawsuit.
But if you, if we state in the RFP that it's going to be a nonprofit we're going to contract with, then we are eliminating any for-profit businesses who want to contract with the city for a component of the legal side, of the multi-gym center.
That's been my concern as far as a distinction, whether you do that.
Because we need to state in the RFP, what are we looking for? We are looking for a nonprofit. And right away, what we're doing is we're taking away the vast majority of anyone who might respond to it. And that could be a lot of local businesses.
That's right.
So I need to find out from you what's our position, how you want that distinction made in the RFP. Are we looking for nonprofits and/or for-profits, just saying this?
Okay, well, let's top along this council here. We've had some questions and concerns. And let's, let's talk about this, because, I mean, this goes back to the rules at all, right? I mean, it's this council or previous council that said they wanted nonprofits in that May 1st meeting. So again, this is the time to clarify, because this is how we're moving forward, so...
And the course served for me was always, how many nonprofits do we have in City of Maricopa capable of fulfilling what we're asking for?
Absolutely.
That's a discussion, we're deciding with the...
So like you just said, we're going to cut out a lot of for-profit businesses that might come in and do a good job, you know, that is cost-effective, right? So the question then begs is, how do we, how do we proceed with that? Thoughts?
We get an and or, and we get small options.
We don't have an or.
Well, this, I mean, from an options standpoint, would options not be...
Mayor, I think, I think you can do that. I mean, I think, Councilor Brown, I think you could, from a city perspective, say the city would prefer to contract with a nonprofit that is willing to take bids from anyone who's willing to bid on the project. So we could take bids from both sides, it doesn't, we don't have to... Does that concur with, if that language is the way that you...
Yeah, we could do that, we absolutely could do that. Again, we just, once we get to the...
It depends what they're going to do, though. I mean, all we're trying to do now is trying to encourage as many bidders as possible.
Yes.
So if we're into a profit company running the whole building, yeah, then we've got to be very careful. I think that's what Thomas got into, is that's where we have to really be careful with how the agreement gets structured, so we don't violate law provisions.
Like the contract, is that right?
So we're only giving like 10-year time prices or something, otherwise you're going to go pass up. So thoughts, question, can you talk something? Councilor, if you have a question?
I said we just leave it open, both either. We prefer nonprofit, but we'll take bids from profit companies. That's what we're going to do. You know what, I'm okay with the majority of the council votes, but I have to first speak to a nonprofit myself.
One of the discussions that I was telling the Councilor Brown, is the fact that if we opened it out, we'd get more contracts in the end, or we'd more... And of course, I'm leaning towards a nonprofit, but at the end of the day, if we only have one nonprofit, how much of a choice are we giving?
Right. Yeah, the order of the council.
One of the real issues there, to become a nonprofit for a small company is very expensive, right? Costs between $10,000, $15,000, it can take a minimum of six months up to a year. So if there's a limit on the timeframe, it's hard to do. Then the guys at Water Park, who say they want to be a nonprofit, are out of the picture.
I think, I think the way that we should do this is kind of what Dennis had said about, you know, we structure this looking for the nonprofit, that was the original goal, it was the original thought process. Because we set that motion looking for that, okay? But kind of opening it up on that back end, like you talked about, you know, we don't want to exclude it too much, yet I think the idea is to encourage the team building, right? So just like Stephanie was talking about, we're encouraging the team building with the for-profit entities that want to basically subcontract under the nonprofit, right? So we're not excluding that. So if that's what we're looking for primarily, and we're pointing it towards, we're looking for the nonprofit, we, you know, this is the preferred, you know, method and measure. However, if you are a for-profit, and you feel the need or desire to bid, you can. I mean, is that, is that too restrictive or not restrictive enough, or, I mean, what are your thoughts, Councilor? I saw a question back there.
Mayor and council, my name is Cindy Dunn from Actualites Network, and I've had a lot of experience in bringing together a community, a group of nonprofits per city, under one vision, to do community events. It's a, it's a small task, and it happens just a couple times a year. But this process that you're talking about is very, very important. And I think you really have two goals in mind. You have two opportunities. For line 23, it says you're going to do multiple contracts, or you're going to do one overall provider. And so if you do one overall provider, a suggestion that I would suggest is to do that with a nonprofit, and you strongly encourage that nonprofit to take within it our community, and subcontract, and make each of these places a part of their community under their leadership. Or you do it as multiple contracts, and let nonprofits and profits side by side pick out the pieces that they want. I'm sure, you know, Brian on one hand wants to do one thing, Amy wants to do gymnastics. I'm very concerned about the wedding and, you know, the meeting space, and the festival space. And so each of us has a skillset that we want to bring to the table, and I think your job today is, how are you going to frame that up for us? Do you want us all to bring you our individual skillsets and let Jennifer manage it? Or do you want a nonprofit to manage it and have that overall leadership ability and bring us all together? But strongly encouraging a nonprofit to bring us all together, I think it's got to be a part of your equation.
Again, let's, you know, the thought process is here. Is there anything else anyone wants to say on this topic? I mean, right here, council, anything else?
Well, I think what's said is, if a problem might solve a problem, there is a problem, that is the nonprofit we go for, encouraging that nonprofit to seriously consider for-profit companies that are able to perform the task.
Well, both. Absolutely, okay. Anybody else on that?
If we did the and or, would that eliminate that option?
Okay, well, it seems like we're resurfacing back to the nonprofit then. It's the encouragement of the nonprofit, like Councilor Brown said, encouragement of the nonprofit to utilize and give preference to local whomever, right? Am I correct in that? Is it local?
Nonprofits or nonprofit teams, is what I'm hearing.
Oh, yeah, yes, please.
This might be a little out of line, Mr. Mayor and members of council, but would it be possible to ask our, the YMCA, can a nonprofit have a for-profit working for it and not have it jeopardize the nonprofit status? Because I don't know if you can do that.
Great question. I think that, yes, and this is the exact model we do. About 20% of our business is contracted out, just like you do, to dance studios, martial arts, and highly engaged small businesses. And sometimes they get bigger businesses because they can deliver in multiple occasions. And so, so all our martial arts is broken out, just like you're doing up here. Dancing, broken out, just like you're doing right now. That's a very significant part of the 20 community businesses to have. Local people who are very good at that, engage both outside the center and inside the center, and that's a way to their business, because they're very good at what they do. And so, but again, an RFP provision, a direction from council and staff saying that special preferences will be extended to the local businesses who are part of the end.
Little thoughts? Little thoughts? Brown? It's all to what he said. Vice Mayor? You good with that?
What I heard you saying, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, is that you would prefer a nonprofit or a nonprofit-led team that could consist of for-profit businesses.
Good job, Patty, correct.
Right on the path. Okay.
Maybe a logo print.
Oh, I'm sorry, I should have slipped it back over to the other one. Mr. Mayor, members of council, this was awesome. I really think this was so helpful from a staff perspective. I'm seeing a slide of relief that we really did what you want now. We'll be able to bring you what you want. So I want to thank you for your time, and before we go, because we do need a motion, and as we're talking, so I want Patty to just go over real quick what the procurement process would be, and then we would end it with a motion. But before we do that, is there anything else you can think that we didn't cover, or anything that you would like us to include that we didn't have a chance to discuss tonight? Or did we get anything wrong up here?
I just want to make clear this point in legal, to make sure that during this whole process, and our citizens understand as well, that this is a process that council wants to be done. This isn't a commitment to go with a third party, okay? What we're doing is, we're doing as a council, we're doing our due diligence for the citizens of Maricopa, so we can lay it out on the table and decide what the best move is going forward with this multi-gym center. Now, with that said, I mean, like I said, it's not guaranteed that we're even going to go with a third party. And Dennis, when we get this RFP out there, I want to make sure that nonprofits, for-profits, everybody understands this, and we have to have some kind of disclaimer explaining that. You know, just because you're putting this bid in, in this process, doesn't exactly mean that somebody's going to get an award.
Right.
It's not binding, council.
Right, yeah, the city, the city has made up its mind how it wants to go. The city's interested in knowing what's out there, and what opportunities are there to contract, to operate this facility. At the end of the day, the city still has to make up its mind on whether they want to run the facility themselves and provide all the programs, or whether they want to partner with a third-party to operate the city, and then let the third-party go out and enter those contracts for the various services. So right, all we're doing is going out for a bid, and I think you're right. The RFP should say, City of Maricopa has made up its mind, but it's getting closer, trying to figure out how we want to operate this facility. So we're interested in seeing what's available, what do profits and nonprofits want to potentially propose to the city to run this facility, to, for this facility.
All we're doing is our due diligence and trying to be as transparent as possible for this process. Once the process is over, then we've got all our options on the table, and we can make the decision as a council.
Right.
What we would be doing then would be bringing back, as a result of this process, a proposed contract. At that time, council would make the decision to approve the contract or go a different direction. And so briefly go over her recommendation for process. I'll have Patty do that, and then we'll just do a quick recap and ask for a motion.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of public. I am here to go over the options, the procurement options, based on your input this evening. There are three options that we can do. Request for proposal, which most everyone knows is the RFP. Request for statement of qualifications, which is an RSOQ, or invitation for bid. Based on all of the excellent input this evening from everyone, it sounds as though we want to go with an RFP, and that is the recommendation that, as the purchasing manager, I feel is the best case for us, the best avenue for us to follow. The RFP process is looking for the best value... The RFP process is looking for the best value for the city. It is not price-driven, but price is part of the evaluation process. The best value is, what is it that the citizens want? What is it that the council has identified for us? It has a predefined scope of work or services, and it provides some flexibility in the negotiations for the fees and the scope. But we have to be very careful that we do not make a material change to the scope, because if we do, then we have to go out for another solicitation, because by changing the scope that detailed, or very materially, we may have eliminated someone who might have submitted a response. It also includes the option for a best and final offer. If we have some submittals that are very close in the evaluation scoring, we can go out to those firms and ask them for the best and final offer. And that's another evaluation process, and that is fairly short in the grand scheme of things. The process for the request for proposal, now, I want you to take a look at this, and this is the best-case scenario. After tonight's discussion and details, it's gonna be a little bit longer than this. We have to develop the scope and draft the solicitation. There are several sections to the solicitation. It's the scope of work or services, plus there's the terms and conditions, the special terms and conditions, and the instructions, and the format of the submittals. We post the solicitation. It is out there for the public for four weeks. Posting of it is in local paper, chamber of commerce, on the city website, and we send it out to any of the interested parties that would like to be, would be interested in submitting for this. Evaluation process, best case, minimum two weeks. But because of the complexity of this, it's probably gonna take a little bit longer than that. And the evaluation team is made up of experts in the field. It is not made up of purchasing staff. I do not evaluate. I just facilitate the evaluation process. So, the experts will be determined by the city manager and by the community services director. Negotiation of the contract and submit to legal, this is minimum of three weeks. Negotiation of the contract or contracts will take longer. And the award recommendation to council, total time in the best-case scenario is 11 weeks without the holidays, and the targeted council date is January 15th. But because of all of the excellent information and guidance that you gave us tonight, I think that it's gonna be probably in February or March before we get to it. Now, based on the Bradford and Dunleavy study, they recommended that we do this process at least a year in advance of the facility opening. It is my understanding the facility will open sometime in the first quarter of 2014. So, we are on target for doing this process now, to get a contractor onboard for the management and/or operations of the facility.
Very good.
So, you go to slide 39 and just talk a couple bits. We have a...
City code is governing this process and our selection, and the spirit of the procurement process is to be fair and open competition. That means we have to make sure that everyone has an opportunity, whether you are for-profit, nonprofit individual, or a big corporation from New York City. We need to get the best value for the city and for the citizens. We have to make sure that there is no conflict of interest in the process, either actual or in appearance. So, we have to be very open and clear and fair in our competition. The process is tightly controlled. Any procurement responses should be objectively evaluated, using only the information provided in their submittals. What this means is, when we get the submittals and the evaluation team starts going through their submittals, they have to evaluate based on the documents they have in front of them, not something that they saw a month ago, a year ago, or 10 years ago.
I have a question. Transparency, if you respond to the RFP, when do you find out who the competition is? When do you find out what your fault was? When do you find out the status of that?
I will get to that in a minute. To maintain fairness and openness, only one point of contact is identified throughout this whole process, and that is the procurement office, either myself or the buyer. And the reasons for this is to main, to ensure that all potential bidders are given the same information, whether it is additional information that has been identified, a correction to the solicitation, or questions and answers that have been provided by someone through an email to me. I then post it on the city website, so everyone who is interested gets the same information. Compliance with the city's purchasing code and state statutes, and it eliminates any perception of an unfair advantage by one firm or another over the rest of the submittals. And it ensures confidentiality of submittals and responses during the bidding process. So, I must reiterate that there would be only one point of contact throughout this, and that would be the purchasing office at City Hall. So, if there's any questions or concerns, please contact me. The next steps in a solicitation is, the documents are open to the public after the award of the contract, because everything else must be confidential and under lock and key until that point. Recommendation will be made to the city council, they make the award of the contract, and once that is done, then it's open to the public. Any questions? Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this concludes staff's portion of this at this point. Staff's recommendation would be that council move to issue an RFP with the, with the components presented tonight, and so we would just turn it over to you, asking for that, a motion of that type.
We have to continue with the RFP process, including the components that we gathered tonight. I support it, right?
First and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Appreciate it, staff. Thank you very much. Thank you, audience, for being here. But that will go ahead and conclude.